Oh wow, look at all this.
You've got eight downloads.
A pile of information. Is this a revised or what?
That's the adopted.
I think I have it. Probably had this before already. These are certificates? AYC certificates? Thanks for getting that done so quickly.
Are we going to significant changes or is this just an extra copy?
Huh? Just think with holidays and the new year, you know, everybody's like, oh, we'll just deal with it later. And then now it's later. Deal with everything.
Who tries to make it convenient? Absolutely.
That's your parting gift to us.
That's your parting gift. A toast. Don't say she never gave you anything.
So... Okay. Need them right now. Denise, I think I owe you 12 bucks.
Don't worry about it.
It's okay. Yeah, really.
For, I'm sure I owe you something to which I know.
If anybody has any money from me, but... Okay. Puts this cap there.
No, what they did was, we had, when we were refurbished in City Hall after the earthquake, after Norridge, they took down an old drop ceiling that we used to have, and it was a soft natural. This was built, this is all original. All original to City Hall. Well, we had that ugly drops, long presses.
This was a good idea.
Isn't this great? And we just left off the natural.
Okay, good evening, everybody. It is 6:31, and I'll call the regular session of the San Gabriel City Council to order. Tonight's pledge of allegiance will be led by Vice Mayor Manchaca.
Please stand and face the flag. Place your hand over your heart, ready, begin.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite and just.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Pu.
Here.
Vice Mayor Manchaca.
Here.
Councilmember Costanzo.
Here.
Councilmember Harrington.
Here.
Councilmember Liao.
Here.
Okay, next is the approval of the agenda order. Does any member of the council have any objections, motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion second, no objections, it is so ordered. Next, uh, next item, please.
Presentations. Presentation A is recognition of Michael Camerano. Presentation will be made by Mayor Pu.
Well, okay. So, I wanted to, uh, take this moment to, um, you know, both remember and honor Mike Camerano, the late husband of our former mayor and councilmember Mary Camerano, who's here in the audience along with the Camerano family. And a few of us had the opportunity to attend the services just before the holiday break. It's a very moving ceremony, and also the reception afterwards. It was clear that while Mr. Camerano may have been rough around the edges at times, he had a heart of gold, you know, um, and was always there for people. To have a room full of people who had so many stories to tell is, is, is really, um, something I think we all aspire to, you know, to be remembered well, to be, uh, to be loved and to be missed when we're gone. So, um, so it's, uh, it's our honor, the council, the city's honor, to be able to present this proclamation to the family. And it reads, whereas Michael Camerano was born on January 9th, 1938, in Sarno, Italy. At the age of 15, he made the journey across the Atlantic through Ellis Island with his mother and younger sister to join the rest of his family in America in December of 1953. He attended high school during the day and worked at a local New York grocery store before joining the cement masons. He quickly rose his way up from being an apprentice to a business agent of the cement mason local union. His dreams of becoming an American citizen came to fruition as he was sworn in as an American citizen on February 9th, 1959. He then married his wife, Mary, whom I understand he met while crashing somebody else's wedding. So, um, never, uh, never doubt the good things that can come from breaking a couple of rules. He married his wife, Mary, and started a family together. Mike and Mary have been married for over 61 years and raised their five children, 11 grandchildren, and seven great-grandchildren in Southern California. He was not only a hard-working man, but a man of all trades with his impeccable skills in cement masonry and carpentry. Most importantly, his ability to help any person in need made him the outstanding person he was for his family, friends, and for the city of San Gabriel. He was a remarkable man who served as a loving inspiration to his friends and family and will be missed by all who had the good fortune to have known him. His legacy shall carry on through his family and the workmanship of his trade. Therefore, I, Jason Pu, Mayor of the City of San Gabriel, California, on behalf of the City Council, Vice Mayor Denise Manchaca, councilmembers Julie Costanzo, John R. Harrington, and Chin Ho Liao, do hereby recognize Michael Camerano for his dedicated contribution to the San Gabriel community and honor his memory. So... And will the family and the council please come forward so that we can present this proclamation?
On behalf of my family, my daughters, my sons, my son-in-laws that are here, thank you very much. Mike was sick for quite a while, but even when it happens, it's always a blow, always a big blow. But we do have beautiful memories. Mike is the American dream. Come to America, and he had lost his father when he was eight years old. And his mother and his sisters, they started a life here. Luckily, his maternal grandparents were in Buffalo, took them in and helped them, but along the way, they had to really provide for themselves. Mike was always someone that couldn't sit still, always someone that had to do something and keep busy. So, coming from Southern Italy, Buffalo was not his cup of tea. He couldn't wait to get out of Buffalo, and he kept telling it, telling me, one of these days, I'm going to check out California. Well, when my brother moved to San Diego, the brother whose wedding he crashed where I met him, he decided that he was going to check out California too, and he did. And called me up within two weeks and said, get a mover, this is it. I found, I found my place, and, um, he really liked Altadena, I really liked San Gabriel. You could tell who won that argument. And we are grateful for that, and my children always tell me how extremely grateful they are that we did come to California. We became involved in the community, this community that we love. Been here 55 years, since 1964. And of course, in that period of time, there's always something that needs to be done. And, um, in 1990, when Mary Ruth Hayes gave the Hayes House to the Historical Association, we needed a place to put it. And Mary, uh, Mary Ruth Hayes had left enough money for us to move the house from Pine Street to its current location. And Mike brought the apprenticeship group with him, and they did all the concrete work, did the foundation, did the driveway, did all the work that was needed so that when they did move the house and set it on the foundation, it is still there, and we are very proud to have that, one of our really proudest moments in San Gabriel with the history. And of course, the church always needed, being a member of the mission, there's always so many jobs that need to be done, but never enough money. So Mike did that too. And when Father Ralph Berg approached him and said, Mike, we have a problem. We're not in compliance with the ADA, we need to get our ramps in. So Mike said, this time, you're paying for the concrete, I will do all the work. But he did bring the church into compliance with that too. And always something for him to do at home. These are the proud moments, these are the moments that I, I know that my children cherish, I cherish, in this community that I love. Thank you very much, our friends, and for everyone here. And I really thank you, Councilmember Costanzo, for all you did to help us get through what we did. And to this community, to this city, to our friends, my family and I are extremely grateful. And now this honor for Mike, thank you very much. Thank you.
Well, there's not much more we can say. I don't know, it's all heard, even said, so, uh, may he rest in peace. Next item, please.
State of Neighborhood Improvement Services. Presentation will be made by Building Official Joe Chen.
While the presentation's getting queued up, for the record, my name is Joe Chen, Building Official. I over, I also oversee the Neighborhood Improvement Services, or NIS for short. Tonight is the overview of the NIS division. Mister Mayor, members of City Council, Happy New Year and good evening to you. Quickly going over the presentation tonight. First thing, we wanted to have an overview of the division. We wanted to walk you through our process, how do we do things, our approach. We have some stats to show you, so that you know what we've been doing. Even though co-enforcement is set up as a reactive program currently, there are special enforcements that we proactively monitor because it is important. So we're going to show you, uh, information on that. Some of the upcoming trends that we think is going to be issues that we need to tackle, some of the challenges that we face, and some of the community outreach efforts that we started in order to address those challenges. This is an overview. To the left, it is the organization chart, um, those are budgeted positions. To the upper right, um, that is our approach. We make sure we emphasize on the education piece. The goal is really to obtain voluntary compliance. That's our model. Communication is most important. I'd like to note that communication is not only with the folks that is abating the issue, but also the reporting party, we need to keep them updated. And lastly, enforcement if we need to. And of course, that involves with monetary citations or even prosecutions. The NIS officers are, has to be trained and certified in order to carry out their daily duties. They are also CDPG funded for very specific tasks and very specific areas. These are the typical violations that we see in the last 12 months or so. Of course, impermanent, illegal constructions, improper use of residential properties, such as short-term rentals, boarding houses, a wide spectrum of property maintenance issues. Of course, graffiti, shopping cards, improper disposal of grease for, for establishments. And of course, sign issues typically on the major commercial corridors. In order to accomplish all this, we, we need help. We work with a wide spectrum of agencies. Aside from the city departments, we work with, for example, state agencies such as AQMD for air pollution, county agencies, Health Department, San Gabriel Humane Society for animal issues, even private companies such as Athens that help us providing resources for cleanup events and to address difficult situations. Like to quickly take you over, walk you through the journey of a case. Whenever a complaint is received, of course, we have to go and do an inspection. Before we do that, though, we open a file so that we could track everything. When the issue is not visible from the public view, we have to give notice. And sometimes that's done through a courtesy notice or a phone call. If there is a violation found, the first piece of document we issue is called a notice of violation, and that's when an actual co-enforcement cases is open. This notice of violation contains three very important information. One is exactly what the violations are, and a coordination, and a coordinated, um, co-sections. Second is exactly what needs to be done. Thirdly, um, a reasonable timeframe to address this issue. Before the timeframe expires, we do a follow-up inspection. If the issue is not resolved, we make a request for compliance. If that does not happen, we then have to resort to enforcement actions such as monetary citations or prosecutions. The goal, of course, is gaining compliance. This is some example cases that we encountered last year, uh, from left to right. That's front lawn parking, followed by illegal conversion. There was a storage shed that got converted into, um, a number of things. If you know the front lawn parking, uh, on the next picture, the entire front lawn is being replaced by paving, and of course, trash and debris. These are some of the more severe cases, um, that we encounter. Of course, trash and debris, those are oil, um, from restaurants, and of course, um, overgrown weeds because it was such a wet season last year. Some before and after pictures, um, quite self-explanatory. The one in the middle is actually for abandoned vehicles. That's actually a quite common issue here in our city. Some data, um, from last year, please note that this is last physical. So that's July 1st, 18, to June 30th, 2019. We receive about 240 inquiries or complaints from the community. But we opened 1,100 cases. And the reason for that is because of the proactive programs that we, we started, which we'll get into a little bit detail. And also, uh, our division is the enforcement arm for city agencies or departments. We issue citations ranging from fire department, uh, fire code issues, to animal violations, to business license, for example. It looks like about 75% of the cases are in CDPG area. We were open, we were able to close a good number of cases. All in all, we had to issue about 80 citations in order to gain compliance. And some stats on the graffiti, we addressed 631. And please note that that's locations, that's not the number of graffitis. Just a comparison of the last five years. As you can see, it's quite consistent except for last year. Last year, we really make it, put in a lot of resources to address two major issues. One is illegal dumping, because we get so many complaints. And second is because, uh, for overgrown weeds, because it was such a wet season. Onto proactive projects. Graffitis, dilapidated conditions, discarded furnitures, should not be the first thing people see when they enter in our city. And that's why Gateway should be a proactive program. Specifically, the gateways are the freeway off-ramps. That's, um, the freeway off-ramps will be San Gabriel, Del Mar, and New Avenue. And of course, the major corridors coming in from east and west. Mission District, because it's such an important area in our city. The major commercial corridors, we look for, um, property maintenance issues, signage, things like that. Again, illegal dumping, because we get so many complaints. Massage business, inherently, it is something that we need to routinely monitor. Some pictures of the proactive programs that we just mentioned. To the right, that's our gateway. To the left, it's something we're trying to avoid. Some information on illegal dumping. Last year, we started a new red tagging program. Red tagging is red because it needs to be visible. On the red tag, it has all the information someone would need to address the issue. It also serves as a notice if we need to escalate, elevate the issue to, to address the case. We had found that the red tagging is very effective in single-family home areas, not so much in commercial, in multifamily apartments and condos. That's why through the proactive programs, we opened a lot more cases than red tagged issued. 520, just about. All in all, we only had to issue about 70 citations to gain compliance. Some issuing citation does take some time, but it looks like we are getting a majority of compliance. Some updates on massage business. This is as of today, actually. 21 massage businesses had closed. There are only now 16 that's operating with a formal CUP. 10 of them switched to 20% massage, less than 20% massage business, uh, services. There are only four now that's operating with a justifiable, uh, extension. Some photos of the Mission District. We had noticed there's a slight uptick, um, of homeless activity. And of course, the picture to the right is something that we constantly monitor. We feel that Mission District is a piece of real estate where, uh, we need to address the issue before, immediately. Some of the upcoming trends that we think will be happening. It's quite a wet sea, it could be a wet season as well. But more importantly, the issues that we think that we need to tackle is, um, front lawn parking. And that's because it's not one or two properties. We're noticing entire neighborhoods that are replacing front lawn with parking lots. Of course, the abatement for that is quite difficult. So it's, it's, it's a trend that I think council may hear about. Short-term rental, it had been, and we staff feels that it'll continue to be an issue, especially, um, the new state ADU ordinances. This may be something that we need to monitor. Impermanent construction, as mentioned, it had always been, and we feel that it's continued, will continue to be a trend that we need to spend resources to monitor. Onto the challenges that we typically face. The first thing is timing. Everything we do needs to be within legal boundary so that we need to serve proper notices, given enough reasonable amount of time to abate the issue. That translates to sometimes you don't see immediate results. Locating the responsible party, we had found that, um, a lot of our property owners do not live on site. They don't live in the state, they sometimes live outside of the country. So, um, take some time to locate, um, these, the responsible parties. Repeat offenders, um, that just seems like we're not doing much. But the fact that the violation just continues to happen. We also have found that a lot of folks do not know what they're doing is actually a violation. And so that goes back to our emphasis in education, which we'll touch on in a little bit. And lastly, uh, the city, and of course, our division, do not get involved in civil disputes. That is your neighbor-to-neighbor dispute. Sometimes we receive some frustration because we can't do anything about it. To compact these issues, um, our director, Armani, had wanted to make an emphasis on community outreach. A lot of these are new, actually. Quickly going over, we partner with the police department to get out there in the residential neighborhoods, into the neighborhoods, actually, meeting with residents. Of course, all the great events that we have, we make sure that we are visible and getting the information out. We had completely updated our website with all the information someone would need. Created new flyers. We actually created some engaging, uh, videos, which I actually have a sample. It's a one-minute video, I believe. I'd like to share that with you. Yep, Melon? Thank you, Melon. By the way, that one is obviously in English, we had that translated into Chinese and also Spanish as well. Following that, um, some photos of the community outreach that we've done. Uh, of course, national night out, um, neighborhood block parties. Some photos of the engagement that we've done. The photo on the right is actually a, uh, we participated in the county e-waste event. That's where we passed out the information about dumping, uh, because we feel that that's the correct audience. Our division responds to every complaint. So it really is counting on the community to report the issues, letting us know. With the city councils' continued support and all the divisions that we work with, it truly is, uh, every effort. truly is, every effort truly counts. And that concluded my presentation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Joe. Really appreciate that. And really liked the interactive, the engaging videos. It's really a fun way of presenting information.
We're going to excuse ourselves.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I want a copy of that.
Alhambra cannot poach off of us. Copyright San Gabriel 2020, okay? Copyright San Gabriel 2020. We will enforce our IP rights.
But Gennady's can't have copyrights.
Oh, oh, well. Then I'll copyright it. Thank you, Joe. I think, I personally think, I feel like I've noticed it, like, less, less of the bulky items on the streets and, you know, cleaner, you know, building sides, these walls, things like that, where there used to be graffiti, those, those issues all get addressed right away now, these days. And even weeds, weed abatement, things like that, that I think Public Works has done, along with the curb paintings, things like that. Those little touches, I think, really do, you know, freshen up the city and make us look, look much nicer. Next item, please.
Census Update 2020. Presentation will be made by Assistant City Manager and Community Development Director Arminia Chaparian and Justine Chen, Strategic Partnerships Specialist from the U.S. Census
Good evening, Mayor Pu and members of the city council. Happy New Year. We've got quite a bit going on, and we thought it's a great time to kick off and give you an update on the things we're doing with our census efforts. It has been a busy journey for us, because this is not something new. We've actually, as a city, kicked off our efforts starting last summer. We have formed an internal committee that's been working closely with some members of the council and our community. I wanted to just kind of tee it up for Justine, because she'll give you kind of a global overview of what's going on and why it's so important for the city to be involved. However, I think it's important to emphasize that we, as a city, have actually started to spearhead our own efforts in conjunction with the county and the state, because we feel that it's really important for us to be at the forefront in doing a lot of the outreach and the marketing. We have actually already formed our Complete Count Committee. We've had a meeting, we've invited our community organizations to participate. We have our second Complete Count Committee meeting happening this weekend on Saturday from ten to twelve in the Mission District in a Padilla Room. We've had several, we've, we've almost had monthly internal meetings to get the word out and work with our local organizations. We are partnering with the county, and we've received our, kind of our interim digital marketing toolkit, which we've started posting in different places. We've launched our city website that provides information about the census and the importance of it, and, and why we're urging our residents to participate. It's really important for us to spearhead this quite a bit, because this is going to be the first time that all the information's going to be done online, and, and that's important for us to get our residents to understand the importance of actually doing that. At the tail end of the process, would somebody actually come to your home? That's very different than what we've experienced in, in previous times. We've actually also included information in our Fall Grapevine. And as I mentioned earlier, we will have our second Complete Count Committee meeting this Saturday, and we are highly encouraging our community organizations to come and participate. We will also have members of the census there. We're also promoting all the jobs that are available through the census. So if any of members of our community are looking for work, there are employment opportunities. We will have information available about that this Saturday as well. I'm now going to turn it over to Justine. She's been very involved with us in the last few months, and her presentation will be a lot more detailed, especially about all the different ways folks will be filling in their information online. So save all your good questions for Justine. So, Justine?
Good evening. Thank you so much for having me. To the mayor and council members, my name is Justine. I am a Partnership Specialist for the U.S. Census Bureau. I cover the San Gabriel Valley. And I'm here to tell you a little bit about the census, why it's important, why you should respond to it. And then I'll go into a little bit more detail about language access and the internet format. So, our goal with the census is to count every person living in the United States, regardless of citizenship, once, only once, and in the right place. So, few of the reasons why we do a census. So first of all, it's mandated by the Constitution that we count every person every ten years. So the first census was held in 1790. So every ten years since then, we have held one. So any year that ends in zero. Obviously, this year ends in zero, so we are, we're having a census. One of the most important reasons why it's important to fill out the census is because this is how we determine how much federal funding we get in our communities. So there's about $1.5 trillion that will be apportioned to states, counties, and communities for programs such as the ones you see on the screen. Things like Head Start, Free School Lunch and Breakfast, emergency and disaster funding and preparedness. I think I mentioned Head Start, public transit, roads, bridges, infrastructure. And a lot of other public services are funded using federal funding and grants. It's also for fair representation. So as you know, the House of Representatives depends on population. And so the, counting how many people are in each state, that's how we determine how many seats each state gets. You can see from this map, which is from the 2010 census, California has fifty-three seats in the House of Representatives, and that did not change after the 2010 census. Based on some projections, since the population of California has not grown as quickly, or sorry, as much as in previous decades, we could actually lose one, maybe even two seats. And you can see the next populous state is Texas, and they have thirty-six seats, and that's after gaining four seats after the 2010 census. In terms of redistricting, after all of the census data is collected, it is then used by local municipalities to redraw boundaries for congressional and state legislative districts as well, as well as school districts, to account for population shifts. So, these are the types of hard-to-count populations that we are focusing on. Here in Los Angeles County, we have all of these types of hard-to-count populations. And LA County is actually the hardest-to-count county in the entire United States. The City of Los Angeles is also the hardest-to-count city in the entire United States. So it's really important that we reach these hard-to-count populations. We have, for example, a lot of people experiencing homelessness. So I think it's over forty-five thousand people who are experiencing homelessness here in Los Angeles County. I'd also like to emphasize that your responses are protected by law. So according to U.S. Code Title 13, we don't share any of your responses with other government agencies. I'm sorry, we don't share any personal information. The results of the census are reported in statistical format only. So you can go to census.gov and look through any of our databases that are available to the public, and you'll only see numbers and percentages. Census employees such as myself swear a lifetime oath to protect all this information, and penalties for us include up to five years imprisonment and/or a fine of up to $250,000. So the newest addition to the decennial census is the ability to respond by internet. Both the internet and phone options will be available in English as well as twelve foreign languages, including Spanish, Vietnamese, Korean, Chinese, Russian, Arabic, Tagalog, Polish, French, Haitian Creole, Portuguese, and Japanese. We will still have the paper format, but that will not be available until a little bit later, in April. And of course, you could also fill it out in person. If we do not receive responses from a household in either the internet, phone, or paper format, they will most likely receive a house call. So this is the timing that we're looking at. We are starting in March with sending census invitations in the mail. Basically, that's going to be a postcard that will have a website on it, and you can go to the website and fill it out. There will be a personal identification number, but that is not required in order to fill out the census questionnaire. And you'll receive several reminders through the mail. And then with the very last reminder, you will receive the paper questionnaire. The census will go through the end of July, and by July 31st, we are going to wrap up everything and process all of the information, put it into a report, and that will be presented to the president by December 31st of this year. And then the following year, in 2021, in March, all of the census information will be made available to local governments for redistricting purposes. So this is more of the newer information that I really wanted to share. You know, given the diversity in Los Angeles County, this part is pretty important. So, as I said, the internet self-response, as well as any census questionnaire assistance, will be available in English as well as twelve non-English languages that are listed in the blue columns. We will also have language guides in video and print, language glossaries and language identification cards in fifty-nine non-English languages in the light blue or gray. The paper questionnaires and mailing materials will be in English. Some census tracts will be receiving them bilingually, in Spanish as well. And in terms of non-response follow-up, that's the door-to-door, the door-knocking that we do towards the end in May and June and July. There will be a bilingual handheld instrument that our numerators will have with them, and they will also have bilingual materials as well, and they will have instructions to give out in terms of how to respond online or by phone. I don't think I'm going to go too much into detail in terms of the methodology and how we came up with what languages to use, but this is just to show that there was some thought put into how to determine what languages to convert from English. So these are the non-English languages that will be supported. The twelve in bold on the left are the twelve that will be supported on the internet and through census questionnaires, I'm sorry, the census questionnaire assistance. These are the six regions for the census. Each region covers several states. So for the Los Angeles region, we cover seven different states. I think Hawaii, Alaska, Washington, Oregon, Nevada, Utah, and Idaho. And the ones in bold include, are part of the twelve foreign languages that are supported. Oh, I had a cheat sheet the whole time. So these are the, the seven states that comprise the LA region. You can see that California and Washington have a lot of non-English languages that are spoken by a thousand or more limited English-speaking households. This is based on 2010 American Community Survey. Actually, California's list is so long that it goes on to a second slide. So I won't go through all thirty-seven, but just so that you know. Internet self-response, these are, this is how it's going to look. That's the homepage. You can click on the foreign language that you need, that is listed across the top over here. And so these are all tabs. And if you just click on one, it'll go directly to that language, and you can fill it out in that particular language. I think this is a video, but I'm not sure if you guys have time for that. We can definitely show the video at the CCC meeting on Saturday. This is just more information about what the census questionnaire assistance entails. They will have a dedicated phone number in order to ask questions and receive assistance in those twelve non-English languages. The language assistance sheet will also have twelve non-English languages, and they will have instructions on how to select languages online, also with dedicated phone numbers in those languages. The video language guide is available in nine, in fifty-nine non-English languages, and they will be available online to stream or download. I think the streaming is from the U.S. Census Bureau's YouTube channel. The video is about eight minutes and includes basic information about the 2020 census. The print language guide is pretty much the same thing, except it's just in print in fifty-nine languages, as well as large print and Braille. In terms of non-response follow-up, I kind of already went through this. So they'll have an enumeration instrument in English and Spanish, they'll have language identification cards and language glossaries in those fifty-nine non-English languages. This is what the enumeration instrument will look like. And they will be, so if you are working as a census numerator or census taker, they will train you on how to use this. These are mockups of the language identification cards. And as well as the language glossaries, where you can look up the English word and then find the definition in your language. Publicly available resources. There is a language support memo where we explain this more in detail, and there's a language resources webpage as well on the 2020census.gov website. And I think, I think that's it. That's pretty much all I have. But we can go more in-depth on Saturday at the, at the CCC. So thank you so much for having me. Oh, do you have any questions? I don't know if you take questions.
Okay. Quickly.
Sure.
Thank you. Thank you. I just have a quick question. So for Chinese, you put down simplified. But however, in LA County, for our next election, we decided to use traditional Chinese. And the reason is that, well, because the people can read simplified Chinese, they also understand traditional Chinese. So is it possible that you can change that to traditional? Because as I understand, people read traditional cannot, you know, understand simplified.
Yeah. I'm definitely one of those people. So I understand what you're talking about. So the internet format is only in simplified Chinese. We have other materials such as flyers that are, some are in traditional Chinese. And I think in terms of the language, the language assistance guides, I think those may be in both, I'm sorry, traditional and simplified, but I can check on that. Was your question about the internet format specifically?
Well, actually, I, my question is, you know, if it's not too late, can we have both, you know, simplified and also traditional Chinese in internet? Audio, you probably need more languages. For instance, in LA County, we have Cantonese speaking, we have Mandarin speaking, we have Taiwanese speaking. So I, I don't know how many you can have. But in writing, I guess these are two major. But in writing, I guess these are two major, traditional and simplified.
Yeah. In terms of the Internet format, I mean, I think that was probably decided one or two years ago. So it's, I think, too late to do that, yeah. And then in terms of the phone, however, I do know that phone operators will be able to speak Mandarin as well as Cantonese. I don't know about any other dialects. But yeah, something to maybe write your congressperson about is having a non-traditional.
I'll come to the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Justine. I know you've been hard at work with the entire census team, as has our staff with the CCC. And also, before you go, Justine, I understand you guys will have a booth at our Lunar New Year Festival. So if you could let Rebecca know in the back whether you would use it for a full day or a half day, that would help us in our planning purposes. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, sure.
Okay, next item.
Public comment. This is the time set aside for members of the public to address the City Council on items of interest that are not on the agenda but are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the San Gabriel City Council. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the City Council cannot answer any questions or take any action until such time as the matter may appear as an item on a future agenda. In an effort to provide everyone with an opportunity to speak tonight, please be aware that all public comments will be limited to a maximum of three minutes. You will receive a 30-second warning as you approach the end of your time. As a reminder, please be respectful of all speakers, regardless of the position they take on any items. If you wish to address the City Council, we request that you please complete a speaker's request card and hand it to the clerk. When speaking, please state your name for the record.
Okay, we currently have three speaker's request cards. First one is Ms. Sue Fitzsimmons.
Good evening, City Council, Mayor Pooh. Happy New Year. I'm here tonight for two reasons. Number one, I want to address this to Mayor Pooh. The Christmas tree lighting. I have to publicly tell you that it was wonderful. It was really very, very nice despite the sprinkles of rain that we had. I think there was a great turnout. Everyone had a wonderful time. And I think that trolley with the horses on it was a real big hit. And that would be something you probably want to think about doing again. Secondly, I kind of wanted to update you on the K-9 program.
But also, with respect to that, please also thank Greg and the Public Works Department for doing like the enhanced, you know, tree decorations and making the entire plaza park look fantastic. So big hand to them as well.
To Greg as well, so kudos to everyone. Anyway, secondly, I want to kind of update you on the K-9 program. We are going into a new year. We're looking again for donations because as the nonprofit is going to be paying for their vet insurance coming up in March, we now have a calendar that we have put out for our K-9s. So I encourage everyone to take a look at it, purchase it. It's only $15. Unfortunately, it is just our Bentley. We couldn't get Eddie to participate in it, but hopefully this year we will. But I think if, when you look at it, you're going to see some really fun, fun pictures. There are action shots, there are workshops, and there are just actual fun shots. So we encourage everyone to please purchase the calendar. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Fitzsimmons. Maybe we can have our PIO do a posting to advertise the, you know, sale of these calendars so we can raise more funds from the community.
That'd be great. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Ms. Frances Chavez.
Hello, thank you for letting me address you, City Council. I haven't spoken in public for a few months. I usually speak to children. I'm a teacher. I have a couple of concerns. If you've seen me out in the street, sometimes I'm giving tours, and I love to talk about the history of the city. My family has a long history here. One of the things, on December the 12th, I received two tickets. And at the time, I had, I had had surgery on my toe, not to be graphic. And unfortunately, it had swelled to at least twice the size, if not bigger. I could hardly walk, and I had to go to the doctor over here on Padilla Street. So I parked, and it was a rainy day. And I was in so much pain, I didn't check the curb, and I was 18 inches away, which I can see. I got a violation. I got a citation. And that's fine. I deserved it. I couldn't see. But on the other end of that, I also received a citation for my registration, which I, for my car, which I had paid on time, but I had failed to see that it needed to be smogged. And so I had taken it, as soon as I got a notice from the DMV, I took it to my mechanic, and he said to drive it for about 100 miles, come back, because there was a light on. And I did that. And then as soon as I went in, he told me the gas tank had a leak. And I said, oh. And he said it was probably going to cost about $1,000. So I was in so much pain. I just went to the doctor that day, and I, when I parked, I got that citation. I got two citations. I was not a happy camper when I came out and I saw that. And I went over to the, to speak with officers. And I just, I tried to keep my wits about me. And I'm a professional, so I have to stay professional, which is fine. And I paid my first ticket. The second one, I'm planning on paying, I'm going to pay it the day right before my registration is due, because it's not going to, it's $138. It's not going to go up. But the thing being that I thought about it, that is harsh. It's draconian. I'm sorry. And usually, I don't say things, you know, like that, but use that word. But the thing is, there are people who are poor, and they may have to work two or three jobs. And the only way they can get to work may be their car. And so I really would ask you to consider that maybe either taking that fine down or doing away with it, because I know in many years ago, what we could do is just get, make sure that you got your tags and go to the police officers. This, I'd go to Temple City and show them, okay. And they'd waive that. But I'm here only to say that you have a population that is poor. And, you know, just to really think, consider that. And also to maybe make it three weeks instead of two weeks that you have to pay the ticket, because I didn't even realize that it was that quick. So I would just appreciate your consideration because, you know, I know that I have a good life, and some people, you know, it's hard. So thank you so much for your consideration. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mrs. Chavez. And actually, if you'd like to speak to Captain Fabian Valdez in the back, you know, he might be able to assist you.
Thank you.
Welcome. Okay, next, we have Mr. Mike Liu. It's Mr. Liu. Hi.
My name is Mike Liu. I came to United States all the way from Taiwan as Mr. Chen Ho Deau in 1983. And I like this city, City of San Gabriel, very much. As the lady just said, I love this city. That's why I invested more than 10 pieces of property in this city since 1983. But only things I don't like is the traffic. The traffic is so terrible, year by year, every year. And that's why I'm spending my time here to stress how terrible. I came to here seven years ago, the same situation, the same trouble. I say to all council, all councilmen, including Mr. Chen Ho Deau, and the traffic in Broadway and South Marina Avenue was a terrible spots, you know, recently. November 13th, last year. Robert, he's, we say he's Park Ranger, because he always come to Smith Park to talk to all the people. We know all him. And he went to Vietnam, fighting for the country. And he's lucky, coming back very safely. Eventually, he get killed in this city, his hometown. That's why I feel so bad for him and for all the people, for all the people walking in this city. And I, I took the picture. He is lying in here. In here, November 13th, around 5:30. I want to show everybody like this, and also all councilmen. This is the situation we have to improve right away. We cannot wait anymore. That's why I, I just stand over there. I hand this out, and all the people, more than 100 people, sign with their email, their phone, their email, everything. And you can check it. This is just a few days. I get 100 people in here. And if you need more, I can collect more, even more. And but I say to them, I come here to let everybody know. If we can improve, that's okay. If not, then they will come, more and more people coming, never ending. And maybe this kind of provision, I can just leave it here. You want to take it?
Yes, please.
And the picture is here, right here.
If you would like to provide it to us.
Yes.
Would you like it back, though? We could also make a copy for you.
No, no, you can keep it.
Okay.
Yeah, because I, I like this city so much. That's even the city palm tree that is donated by my group, my Taiwanese group, we spent $10,000. But Chen Ho Deau said to me seven years ago, he said, the budget may be not enough. And he said, because put another stop sign, maybe can solve the problem. That's okay. Here, I just request, maybe just to put pedestrian drinking line. It won't take you so much money. And if you don't have money, then I will bring the money for the city.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Liu.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Mayor, can I suggest him to talk to our city engineer?
Sure. Greg, would you like to speak with him? You know, we've had conversations at the council level many times about having these, what are they called? Rapid reflecting, you know, lights at crosswalks and so forth and so on. So, yeah, part of the issue is budget, but also about design. But if Greg, you wouldn't mind speaking with him for a few minutes? That way, maybe you can give him an idea of what our plan and vision going forward is. Thank you, sir. Is there any other member of the public who would like to address the San Gabriel City Council? Okay, seeing none, I will close public comment. Next item, please.
Consent calendar. All items listed under the consent calendar are considered routine, and recommendations will be approved in one motion unless a member of the City Council or audience requests separate discussion. Mr. Mayor, staff requests that item 4G be approved as amended to authorize the city manager to execute the agreement with the San Gabriel Segals.
I'm sorry, as amended?
Just to authorize the city manager to execute the agreement.
Okay, I don't see any amendment here, though. All right, thank you. I would like to pull item F. Are there any other items that would, should pull for item, separate discussion? Okay, seeing none, I will move approval of A through E and G and H with the amendment to item G to include an authorization for the city manager to sign the agreement with the San Gabriel Segals.
I'll second.
Okay, motion and second. Let's go to the board.
Motion passes by a vote of 5-0.
So for F, just wanted to clarify a few things about the, about the language of the code sections. So first of all, just to refresh our memories from before the holidays and so forth, where did the language for these new code sections come from?
Most of them are modified from the fiscal sustainability policy.
From the...
The fiscal sustainability policy that the council adopted a few months ago is just a policy. We wanted to codify it in the municipal code so that it carried a little bit more weight and that these things were actually done or considered each year with the budget adoption. And also for the audit, the annual audit, there was never anything in the municipal code that required an audit or to have the audit made public or made at a public meeting.
Paul, would you mind lowering your microphone a little bit? So, thank you. Okay, so then in section, now I'm in the code sections. Section 34.81B. Could you clarify for me what, so here are provisions shall be made and propose operating budget for the following. And then numbers two and three are other statutory expenditures and three, payment of all judgments. Can you clarify what kinds of statutory expenditures? What, you know, what are statutory expenditures? What would they would need to, what would need to be specified in the budget?
Oh, well, one of them would be that we now have to pay the County of Los Angeles for the property tax administration that we didn't have to before, but now by statute, we have to pay them that amount. So we have to include that in there as an expenditure. For the payment of judgments, it's any lawsuit that is settled in favor or not in favor of the city that we have to pay.
Okay, so wait, so statutory expenditures, are you talking mostly about intergovernmental expenditures?
Yes.
Or payments that need to be made?
Correct.
Okay, but nothing that is sort of statutorily required that the city, I mean, so for instance, you know, PERS obligations are obligations, obviously.
Correct.
But those would not be considered quote-unquote statutory?
Well, once you became a member of PERS, I believe you do have a requirement, a legal requirement, to make those payments. But this was more of the statutory by legislation that we are required to pay.
Okay. So I don't, okay, so, all right. I mean, obviously, these are fine. Obviously, we need to, we shouldn't account for all of these in our budget. I just wanted to get a good understanding of what we are now codifying, you know. Will those, I guess, the, the question just arises, you know, why do we need to separately codify this?
The whole budget administration portion or just that language there?
Just that language there.
It's up to you. If you don't want it in there, we can certainly take it out.
No, it's not that I don't want it in there. It's just that, you know.
Just to be clear.
Was there ever a situation where we were not including statutory obligations in the budget?
Not that I'm aware of.
I would be concerned if that was the case.
No, not that I'm aware of, but this just ensures. I mean, this isn't to modify things that have been done in the past. This is just to make clear of what we will be doing in the future.
Okay. And 34.83B, I think that the word there should be, City Council shall adopt the budget for the ensuing fiscal year, not ensuring.
Yes.
I had a question on 34.84C, transfer of appropriations. The last sentence there where it says that transfer amounts greater than $15,000 for the fiscal year shall be subject to the approval of City Council unless otherwise accepted by resolution. Should that really say accepted, A-C-C-E-P-T-E-D? Because if not, I would, my question would be, what types of transfers are, would be quote-unquote accepted from, by resolution?
We just did one a couple of months ago or a month ago that by resolution, we didn't have to come back for the $15,000 for a legal settlement that we were looking at, that we were going to transfer money from the contingency fund to that.
Approved by City Council, correct?
By resolution, yes.
Right. So if that's the case, you're, we're talking about transfers that are approved by City Council, correct? Not accepted from the $15,000 expenditure limit?
This, the intent was that we didn't have to come back again once we had the exception without a dollar amount, because the amount that we had approved was accepted in totality for the amount that we had to pay out. And we didn't have the full dollar amount at that time.
Okay. Okay.
And this one is?
I would propose that I think that it's, it's actually supposed to say accepted, A-C-C-E-P-T-E-D, by resolution of the city council. Or, I mean, already says so, but I don't understand the clause, unless otherwise accepted by resolution.
We can take it out. The intent was if it's already been done without a dollar amount, we didn't have to come back.
Right, there's no exceptions to the rule that $15,000 expenditure or more requires approval of the city council, is there?
No.
Okay, then I, yeah, then I guess I propose that we take out this clause that says unless otherwise accepted. In 34.86, I just propose a clarification. It says, no payment shall be made or obligation incurred except in accordance with appropriations duly made or in the case of an emergency situation, only with written city manager authorization. What I propose, just to make it sort of more clear, is to say, no payment shall be made or obligation incurred except in accordance with appropriations duly made or, comma, only in the case of an emergency situation, comma, with written city manager authorization stating the nature of the emergency and the need for the expenditure.
Okay. City clerk, did you get all the wording on that? I couldn't write it that quick.
And then 34.87 currently says, all operating appropriations shall lapse and be returned to unappropriated surplus at the end of the budget. I think it should say, all operating appropriations shall lapse and be returned to unappropriated surplus at the end of the then-current fiscal year. 34.95, independent audit. The city council shall provide for an independent annual audit of all city accounts and may provide for such more frequent account. I think the, the word such there is superfluous. We should just take that out. And then the last sentence, as soon as practicable after the end of the fiscal year. Final audit and report shall be submitted by such, and I would say, I replace the word accountant with independent auditor to the city council. One copy thereof to be distributed to each member. And I would like to add, with a cover memo summarizing the results and findings of such audit. It's kind of implied when it says audit and report, but I think a summarizing memo would be helpful for most of us who are time crunched in reviewing that thick CAFER report.
Mr. Mayor, may I say something about these changes?
Yes.
So I just want to point out that we're doing this, this is the second read of this ordinance. So we're not really supposed to make changes to it that are material. It's more of like corrections of.
I understand.
And I'm not sure if that last one is a material change or not.
Just to add that there should be a cover memo with the report.
I guess, I'm just saying, I truly am not sure whether that is or not. It, you, if, if you want to make.
I've never seen an audit without one, so.
Right.
They always contain them, so I'm not worried about it.
My concern is just if we're going to codify something, then, you know, not just for ourselves, we understand it, that for all future generations of councils, they should all get the benefit of, you know, a summarizing memo.
Well, actually, inside the audit report, the management discussion and analysis is kind of a summary of the whole report, and that is required by governmental standards.
But as I understand it, MDNA is more from management rather than something that's from the auditors.
Correct, but the auditors do review it.
Yeah. I mean, I would like to, because I think some of the issues we've encountered recently have also been lack of independence of the auditors. And I think we need to have more information or direct information and communication potentially with the independent auditors at the council level so that deficiencies would be, you know, more, how do you want to say it? More prominently communicated, you know. I think the lack of controls and things like that in the past have led us down some, some bad roads. And, and then not having proper reporting from, from staff was, you know, a big glaring fault.
We do have our auditor here tonight for the item later on the agenda. I do know that they are restricted by what they can say and not say about the audit report. So I don't know if they would be able to give a summary of such an audit. We can certainly ask him if that would be appropriate to put it in here or we just require it by three-year city manager. I mean, it's not a, they already give a management letter to the city council?
Well, the point is that it's supposed to be an independent audit.
And, and they give the report, they give a summary or a, actually, a, a report to the city council outside of the CAFER that you also have submitted to you with the agenda item that is to the city council directly.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, so I, my point is that, you know, I think a memo that summarizes the, the report, because.
No, that's your budget.
Yeah. I mean, you know, the CAFER itself is, it's a pretty thick document.
Yes.
And so, something that sort of just, I, I, I know that there's, like, for instance, in the acceptance of the CAFER later on on the agenda, there is the sort of regular letter that accompanies it saying, okay, it's a qualified and unqualified opinion, blah, blah, blah. But something a little bit more qualitative maybe would be helpful just to say if, you know, here were some glaring deficiencies. It says, okay, there's no, there were, they're pleased to report there were no material disagreements with staff about, you know, characterizations of things, this, that, and the other. But, but I find that it would be helpful to know if there were, I think basically if there were any particular areas of concern of the independent auditors, I think that might be the, you know, the biggest issue. Otherwise, it's not really a point of an independent audit.
Well, we do have in here that the auditor would be at the, the council meeting, which they are tonight.
I would like this.
Okay.
All right.
I'm fine with it.
And if, if the judgment of the city attorney is that we would need to re-notice and so forth, then I'm happy to do so.
Okay.
But as it is, I will propose to, I propose to pass the recommended action as, or, what does it say? To wait for reading, read by title only and adopt at the second reading, ordinance number 660, amending Title III, Section 34, the San Gabriel Municipal Code, pertaining to budget administration and annual audit as amended.
I would recommend, and again, there's not a lot of certainty on what, how much change is too much change, but just to be on the safe side, and I don't think there's time pressure on this.
No.
Why don't we treat this as a first, a first read and then bring it back for the second read at a subsequent meeting, more than 15 days?
That works for staff.
So then this would be just considered to be a first reading?
First reading by title only.
I'll accept that as a friendly amendment. So, motion on the table.
I have a comment. I wanted to also know, we, Paul and I had a conversation earlier today, an extensive conversation that, about the CAFER. But one of the items that came up was the fact that with our RFP, we're going to include, or we have included, a item about any type of management concerns to somehow bring it to light. And I think that's what our mayor is trying to say, is it was so hidden. I mean, you're, you're looking at this financial report and, you know, we've been told time after time, it was in there, but I don't think it was as clear. And I think the summary would be very helpful. But one of the things you and I, Paul and I spoke about was in the RFP, we're also asking that our city attorney get notification. Because apparently our city attorneys weren't given some type of information to let them know also. Maybe this would be a good place to have it as opposed to just relying on the RFP to have it. Because we talked about maybe codifying that earlier today, and I was going to mention it later during the discussion. But if we're going to bring this back, I wanted to kind of throw that out also. Is this a good place to place it? You know, if there's any type of management concern, especially when it comes to, you know, the long-term solvency of a, of a city, I think it's important to include somewhere.
And the portion that we included in the RFP was if there was any fraud found, if the notice would go to the city attorney, if you want.
Oh, I thought it was even, the bar was even lower. If there was any concern.
No.
Okay, it was strictly fraud.
Right. If we're bringing this back, we can add it in here as well.
Because fraud is really hard to prove or, I mean, nowhere, I mean, from my understanding, there's been no indication of fraud.
No.
But I, you know, there's still a very, a great concern. I mean, we're now looking at a deficit maybe till 2021. So I think we need to lower our bar, and there has to be some level of concern. And I don't know what, how specifically to say it, but, you know, if there's concern that we are having cash flow issues, I mean, that needs to be explained so everyone understands it, not hidden or, you know, re-phrased so no one's feelings get hurt. I mean, we need to start being more honest here. So I'm just not sure what the correct.
We want to, I, the, see, the issue, though, is that we're asking, you were, you would then be asking staff to report on itself. Because the, we find ourselves in this situation because of management, you know, being at least negligent, in my opinion, if not fraudulent. So, so then, you know, you can have all the, you know, code sections you want. That's why I'm, I'm trying to put more reliance upon the independents and the independent auditor to point out, you know, times when they may see like, hey, you know, your revenues and expenditures aren't, aren't coming in the way you originally budgeted, you know. That's something that should be a red flag that's identified right away. And then the council and, and management can, can make, take corrective action right away. So that's why I'm trying to make this the, you know, the independent auditor truly, you know, an independent, I mean, when you do this for a corporation, you know, they, they don't, you know, they, they, they will go through your books and they don't pull punches, you know, they'll re-characterize stuff. And it's meant to be, make sure you are reporting. It's not just about reporting in accordance with, you know, in the financial world, VASB or here, GASB, but it's also about then, you know. Normally, you would say in the, in the financial world, you know, it's, or I think you get this more or less, it's accurate in all material respects. And that may be true, like whatever's on the books was, was then, like, but then you're, what you're really, you're just comparing, you know, what the same set of people said it was supposed to say to itself. Does that make sense? Rather than actually having a kind of control that says, well, you, earlier, like eight, whatever it might have been, 18 months ago, you said it was going to be 100, but now it's really only 85. And that's where I think, you know, we need tighter control. That's why, you know, I think a, a memo along those lines would be more helpful than, than just, okay, there was no disagreements with management. I mean, that's helpful. It is helpful, you know, to know that, that in discussing, you know, the, the financials, they agreed on how things should be characterized, but, I don't know. I think what I'm, what I'm getting at is that the plain vanilla letter leaves a lot of loopholes. And it's easy to kind of like just say, you know, otherwise it's, you know, why do we even pay for an independent audit? You know what I mean?
I guess I'm just adding to it. I'm not disagreeing with it. I'm just saying, you know, if we're doing an RFP where we're asking that the city attorney be involved also to kind of give him the, him or her, I guess, but him in this case, the, alert them that there possibly could be an issue, then there's more people, not just management involved. We've taken it to city council as well as the city attorney. Because apparently there's, I mean, the, the way the RFP is going to be written or has been written, there seemed to be a need to do that. And maybe it was best practices based on your experience.
We just experienced best practice.
That's all I'm saying.
I'm sorry, I'm not following RFP. What RFP are you talking about?
A request for proposal when we go out to.
For new auditors.
For, for the independent auditors?
Yeah, because it's every three years, and so this is.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I'm all for that, too. But is that something that we, are you, so you're proposing that we actually codify that?
I'm sorry. I'm proposing that we codify it as opposed to just relying on the RFP that's coming out. Because apparently it is a best practice. And I think it's just another layer of review and, and making sure that not just management is having, you know, that the city attorney is also being alerted to it. That's all.
I mean, I think I'm, I'm, I don't, I don't have any disagreement with that, only that it would be outside the scope of sort of normal services, I think, and then.
Not, not exactly. I mean, according to Paula.
It was, it was in, it's, we had the RFP, it's actually part of my presentation later on, but we did send out the RFP for new audit services for the next fiscal year or for this current fiscal year. And in there, we did put in there that if they had determined in any case that there was any type of fraud, they would notify not only the finance director and the city manager, but the city attorney as well.
Why can't they just communicate directly with the council?
I mean, that includes, it's the council plus.
I mean, as you're saying, okay, if there's fraud, what if it's on the part of those exact individuals to which they're reporting?
Well, that's why we've included the city attorney.
Right, I know. But I mean, at, at the end of the day, the buck stops with the city council and the body that has the, the authority to hire and fire any of those, you know, individuals is the city council.
Well, you could always create an audit committee to have someone review them, a body of the council members to review it before it goes out or before it's, before it's brought before the full council.
Yeah.
Another layer, a little more work.
Yeah, I'm not necessarily suggesting that because you don't, you're not always going to have council members who are qualified to sit on such a committee. And for that matter, you know, that's my only issue with this is that you won't always have a city attorney who has, you know, financial expertise in addition to legal expertise. So in any case, I mean, I. But how can the independent auditor make a determin, a legal determination of fraud in order to then report to the very individuals that might be?
I thought the, I thought the concept is they find what appears to them to be potential evidence of fraud and they refer to the city attorney to review the situation and give a legal determination if.
That makes more sense to me.
And, and perhaps, you know, at that point, that, that triggers certain responsibility on the part of the city attorney as well, obviously, so.
I like that a lot. Well, and then also that'd be reported to the city council simultaneously.
Yes, they're, when we audit or when we hire the auditors to do the annual audit, they're not actually doing a fraud audit, which is much more extensive. This is just if they come across, if they find it, somehow somebody tells them, then they are obligated to tell management. And we wanted it not to just to be the finance director and the city manager. We wanted to have the city attorney in there as well to explore more before it's determined if it is not fraud or not.
I guess. I would suspect that they would call me right away, any, or call the city attorney right away, in any case.
How do we know?
But, 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 you know, we would, they would find evidence of something, but they would not be able to conclude that it is fraud without help from the city attorney, I guess. So there would, there would certainly, I can imagine, be several discussions and then some kind of internal process to prepare a report on that before we came back.
So I withdraw my earlier motion. And instead of moving forward even on first reading, I would like to see addition to, I guess it would be either 34.95, yeah. To section 35, 34.95, essentially saying that if the independent auditors. 34.95, yeah, to section 35, 34.95, essentially saying that if the independent auditors, you know, find any evidence of, fraud, I guess, is a, is a very high bar, I, I would like to say of gross negligence, willful misconduct, or fraud, to report it immediately to the city attorney and city council, and such requirement shall be included in any RFP for independent audit services.
I, I would, I, I get where you're going with that, I, rather than use those legal terms, we, and we may want to craft sort of a, more of a description of what they're seeing, for example, inconsistent entry, I'll have to talk to Paula about how that would appear, inconsistent entries, or apparent misstatements, or something like that, that would, rather than say gross negligence, because they're not going to necessarily...
Well, if we're going to do a laundry list, we might as well include the, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Include those, include those standards of misconduct in addition, and then have a catch-all, or other material, you know, concern or misstatement, something like that.
Something like that.
Yeah.
Since we're adding a new section, I think at this point, it probably would make sense then to bring this back again as a first reading.
I agree.
Yes.
Mayor, can I have a question for Paula? So, what about the state controller, can they, if we request for audit, can they just come to audit our finance?
Well, their audits are about $200,000 to start with.
State auditor, charged?
Yes, they, they will not do it for free.
Oh.
So...
So, is there any objection to making this, I think, stronger, I think, in terms of the controls, so that, you know, we don't find ourselves in this kind of, the city, not us necessarily, but whoever might be sitting in our chairs, you know, in this type of situation in the future? Okay, all right, seeing no objection, then there's direction from the council, and we'll move on, this, this particular item will be brought back with, with amendments. Next item, please.
Public hearing, Zone Text Amendment relating to the development of accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units, see Zone Text Amendment 19-003. Presentation will be made by Assistant Planner Anthony Alvarado.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council, my name is Anthony Alvarado, and I'm the Assistant Planner in the Planning Division. The public hearing item before you tonight is a Zone Text Amendment to the San Gabriel Municipal Code relating to the new state law providing requirements for accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units, also known as ADUs or junior ADUs. In June of 2018, City Council adopted a Zone Text Amendment, which adopted a new ordinance regulating the development of ADUs. In October of 2019, Planning Committee, Planning Staff brought that ordinance back for a cleanup ZTA that would fine-tune the ADU ordinance. However, around the same time in October, the state amended the government code as it pertained to ADUs and junior ADUs. These new changes all but gutted our existing ADU ordinance, but also other cities ordinances as well. Local agencies' ADU ordinance that were not in full compliance of the state law would become null and void on January 1st, 2020. This is why we are here tonight with both an urgency and a regular ordinance. The California Department of Community Development, also known as HCD, has reviewed the ordinance that you are reviewing tonight, specifically the draft code text. We have to get, as part of the new state law, we have to get the adopted version to HCD for their review within 60 days. Staff would caution against making too many substantive, substantive changes. Since the city's existing ADU ordinance has become null and void on January 1st, Planning Division staff is proposing to delete section 153.047 titled Accessory Dwelling Units in its entirety and replace it with the new regulations that are before you tonight. Some of the key changes are outlined in the table above. Options for ADUs or junior ADUs must be allowed, and in some cases, both will be allowed on a single lot. The city can no longer require a minimum lot size. Calculations such as FAR, floor area ratio, or lot coverage cannot be imposed if it does not allow for at least an 800 square foot ADU. Maximum ADU size has increased from the previous 800 square feet and 50% of the primary dwelling unit requirement, now it is 850 for a studio or a one-bedroom ADU, and 1,000 for a two-bedroom ADU. The city can no longer require the 50% of the primary unit. Setback requirements have decreased to four feet, height has increased from 15 feet to 16 feet. Also, replacement parking requirements have changed in that when a replacement parking struc, when a parking structure is demolished or converted for an ADU, the replacement spaces cannot be required by the city. Impact fees have changed in that ADUs less than 750 square feet cannot be charged in impact fee. ADUs that are 750 square feet and larger can be charged in impact fee, but it must be proportionate to the square footage of the primary unit. Even though the city has limited regulatory allowance for ADUs and junior ADU applications, there are some requirements that we can still enforce, those are as follows. The city is proposing a maximum bedroom count of two bedrooms for the ADU. Covenants can still be required for the ADU and junior ADU, however, there is a limitation that owner occupancy cannot be required for the ADU, and that's per the new state law. Design standards have been carried over, and some of them have even been strengthened. Locations of ADUs for the purpose of fire safety. Planning Division staff believes it is critical to present a tailored ordinance that both complies with state law, but also preserves as much regulatory control as possible. Staff has determined that the proposed amendment would be exempt from CEQA guidelines according to section 15282H. This section exempts the adoption of ordinance relating to second units in the residential zones that implement the provisions of the government code. On December 16th, 2019, Planning Division staff received an email from a nonprofit organization that monitors local compliance with state law regarding ADU and junior ADU. You may recall that this is the same person that reached out to staff when we brought the cleanup ZTA last fall. Planning Division staff consulted the items mentioned in the correspondence with the city attorney and made the following changes. Number one, the table shown above has been clarified to show that ADU conversions in multifamily dwellings is 25% or one unit, whichever is greater. Language has been added to the design section that states ADUs must be reviewed ministerially without a hearing and within the 60-day time window. Language for junior ADUs has been modified to remove requirements for an efficiency unit. Staff has also added section 153.047E to the San Gabriel Municipal Code that provides criteria, criteria that when met, an ADU or a junior ADU application would forego the planning review submittal and move on to building plan check. On December 16th, 2019, the Planning Commission recommended the city council adopt the proposed ordinance by a vote of four to zero. As part of the public hearing that night, Planning Division staff worked with the Planning Commission, city attorney, to address the changes that were outlined in the public correspondence that was mentioned in the previous slide. There are 27 active applications submitted under the former ADU ordinance, or the ADU standards. Staff believes that most applicants would proceed without wanting to revise their current applications, because the square footage that can potentially be gained is minimal. However, if an applicant wanted to submit under the new standards, they would need to withdraw their current application and resubmit for a new site plan review if it would even be required, and that's relating to the applications that go straight to building plan check. Planning Division staff is working on drafting a letter to inform these current applicants of the new standards and the process that it would take for them to proceed with the Even with the increased number of applications, staff believes that the fiscal impacts would be negligible. Additional staff time and resources would be required initially to process the increased number of the applications. Staff would also need to work to prioritize how these are processed in order to keep with the 60-day processing requirement. The public hearing item tonight was advertised in the December 26th, 2019 issue of the San Gabriel Sun. The meeting agenda was posted at City Hall, the San Gabriel Public Library, the San Gabriel Post Office, and on the city's website. In closing, staff recommends that the city council adopt Urgency Ordinance Number 661, an urgency ordinance of the City Council of the City of San Gabriel, California, amending Title 15, Chapter 153, zoning, in order to amend the zoning definitions and development standards to allow accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units in all zones that allow single and multifamily units on-site consistent with state law. Staff also recommends that the city council introduce Ordinance Number 662, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of San Gabriel, California, amending Title 15153, Chapter 153, sorry, zoning, in order to amend the zoning definitions and development standards to allow accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units in all zones that allow single or multifamily units on-site consistent with state law. This concludes staff's presentation, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have this section of the public hearing, which is council questions for clarifications on the presentation. Are there any questions at this time? We will have council discussion again later. Okay, then we'll move to the public hearing portion of the, of this item, and I'll open the public hearing. We already have one speaker's request card for, for this item, so Mrs. Sella Bowles, and I, I don't think we, do we need to reread the rules, the same rules of public comment will apply here for the public hearing as due for public comment generally, thank you.
Good evening, and I hope I can make this really fast, I hope I have enough time to explain this, it's a little complicated, but recently, before you adopt this, I would like to have an additional clarification and definition, so that applicants do not get confused as they have in the past. Recently, we had a residential developer that had a very interesting proposal of new construction, it was a 90% teardown of a home, and anytime you have anything like that, one of the municipal codes that we have is that you have to have a two-car garage, and so the applicant, the architect or the applicant was very creative in doing, combining two things, he was going to combine the ADU and not comply with a two-car garage, and so one doesn't trump the other, and so I would like the council to really consider putting some clarification to, to this new municipal code. I think it's very important that we let the applicants be very clear that one doesn't supersede the other, that if you're going to do any kind of construction, you still have to abide by the garage parking requirements, and that if you do choose to do an ADU, that that does not, again, supersede the requirement of your parking. So, I would like to have specific wording and definitions, so that these ADUs get streamlined, but without the confusion of combining one with the other, yes.
May I clarify, so the situation you're talking about is when an applicant is doing a teardown, and then they're proposing to rebuild with an ADU, but then not, but then not be subject to the normal R1 regulations of, of a two-car garage?
Of a two-car garage, or three-car garage, it, in this case, it would, it should have been a three-car garage, but anyways.
I think we, you know, we can have, we'll have staff, you know, give us some feedback and opinions about, about that situation.
Yes, and Tracy and Anthony are very familiar, so thank you so much.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Bowles. Is there any other member of the public who would like to address the city council on this issue? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing portion of this item, now we have council discussion, would anybody like to start? Councilmember Leo?
Thank you, Mayor, I just have a quick question, so about 27 application we received so far, how many been approved? As of today?
So, 27 active applications, so those applications are currently active, so we ran some numbers, so since the adoption of the original ordinance, which was June 19, 2018, we roughly had about 70 applications of constructed and converted ADUs. Forty-three of those were approved, the 27 are the ones that are still active. Of the 43, 29 are constructed, or adding of new square footage, 14 are converted ADUs.
So, you know, in the process of this, I guess they don't have to go to hearing now, but this staff can decide the applications, you know, comply with the new state law, or or our old city ordinance?
Correct, so they, so the applications that are currently active right now were reviewed under the old, under the old guidelines, so a lot of those applications were complying with FAR, lot coverage, things like that, they wouldn't have to today, so if there was issues with that before, they would have to follow the new state standards today, which would get them to move forward.
Okay, yeah, because the state law supersedes our local ordinance.
Correct.
Another question is, because single family is pretty straightforward, but what about the multiple units, you know, say apartment buildings, and the requirement, I guess, is a 25%, is that of the total square footage of the building, or what, how do you calculate 25%?
That's of the number of units. The number, 25% of the number of units is...
Units?
Yes.
Oh.
I'm sorry, could you clarify that?
Yes.
So, in the example, if there's 10 units on a, on a lot, then how many ADUs are...
25%, so that'd be the two ADUs, I hope that, or...
You could construct up to, two and a half, or three more?
Two and a half, yeah.
ADUs on that lot?
Correct, correct.
Well, if you look at the chart, okay, the, the table A, so it says, you know, to detach ADU, and allow up to 25% of existing multifamily units on the lot to provide an ADU within the, well, whatever, I think my misunderstanding of this is the square footage, you know, no, it's just how many units that allow, okay?
It is determined on the number of units.
Very interesting, and the, so in this case, you know, for the limit of the, or is there a limit for these two ADUs that if they want to, you know, construct in the apartment building, and is there maximum square footage allowed, do you know, because it doesn't say?
Right, so the multifamily unit, the multifamily structure would still abide by the R3 development standards, so let's say that, and maybe Tracy could clarify a little bit on this, too, when space such as attic space, boiler room, storage rooms, according to the new state law... such as attic space, boiler room, storage rooms, according to the new state law, can be converted into those ADUs from the multifamily units. But it can't take away from bedrooms from a multifamily unit because that would affect the parking requirements, the open space requirements, and things like that.
The short answer is multifamily is still going to have to comply with multifamily standards, and the ADUs that would potentially be incorporated into the project are still going to have to comply with the relevant ADU requirements for size. They're going to have to comply with building code and the like. The best example I can give you is I was at a friend's apartment complex over the weekend. And as part of that development, they have like a game room, and as part of the project, they provided a meeting room. It was things that were incorporated in the project in its infancy to appeal to tenants. They're already hearing word that that project may see some of those spaces converted to ADUs. That is now a process that the state law has kind of opened the door for. So, I think that there are some multifamily projects that may have what we would call bonus spaces or amenity areas that were provided above and beyond what city code requirements are in an effort to appeal to tenants that may in the future then be converted to an ADU. But at the end of the day, the multifamily units themselves still have to comply with our multifamily standards in the R3 zone. And the ADUs, if they're constructed or converted, they've still got to hit all of the relevant standards as well.
So, you know, according to this new law, they can build ADU right next to a boiler room, laundry room, basement, anything that if there's a space that it allows?
In theory, yes, but there are still building code requirements. There are still public health and safety requirements that certainly have to be adhered to, that may preclude, I think, some of those D-Day scenarios that we envision coming to fruition from actually happening. The language is there certainly, but there are also, I think, a lot of layers to the onion in terms of protection.
What about junior ADUs? Are we adopting that in our city code?
Yes. So, previously in our old ADU ordinance, we did not have it. Government code did allow for it as an option for cities to bring it on. With the new state law, it is a requirement that all cities allow it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Any others? Vice Member Chaka first, yeah.
Thank you, Mayor Pooh. Anthony, I just, I needed help in understanding on page five, under owner occupancy. It's a new state law, where it's a local agency from requiring owner occupancy for ADUs until after January 1st, 2025. I'm just not understanding that.
Correct. So, until, so up until January 1st, 2025, we cannot have a requirement in our zoning code or San Gabriel Municipal Code that says the ADU has to be owner occupied. Once that day comes and passes, the January 1st, 2025, if the state hasn't, of course, addressed that at that time, we can add that requirement to provide the owner occupancy for ADUs.
So, what if you have a tenant in an ADU, and then that timeframe comes? Can you...
So, it would mean for new applications.
Okay.
Sorry, yeah.
Thank you.
Vice Member Chaka.
So, I just want to make sure I understand this correctly. So, the ADU ordinance is the state one supersedes ours that we've had. But that is, is that, I'm kind of trying to address what the resident was explaining during her three minutes. But that applies after construction. What about before construction? So, with regards to abiding by, to the building codes? If we have a requirement, in this case was the two-door garage, wouldn't that still be in play?
Yes and no. It's a question of timing. So, right now, if someone scrapes, for this particular project, they're scraping the single-family home, or at least the overwhelming majority of it, but they're allowing the garage to remain. And what they did was instead of doing this as a two-part process, they just combined it. They are basically building a new single-family home that, yes, does have a minimum covered parking requirement in the form of the garage, but simultaneously, they were proposing to convert the garage to an ADU. Yes, technically, from a timing perspective, we could have them do the single-family house first. They would meet the code requirements for the minimum off-street covered parking requirement with their two-stall garage. We give them a permit, they build the house, and 20 minutes later, they come in and file a permit to convert it to an ADU. I think from a timing perspective, we're going to kind of see this organically reconcile itself because now we're subject to timing requirements for processing these ADU applications. I think this will eventually become a moot point. In the past, up until now, it's kind of been an economies of scale thing. It makes us easier, it's a little easier for staff to process these as a single application because we can do it all in one fell swoop versus having to parse them out separately. But is this going to happen? Absolutely. We're going to have people that come in and add on to their homes, tear something down and build something anew, and whether they do it on day zero or, you know, 90 days later, they'll apply for an ADU to convert the garage. It's not out of the realm of possibility, and I expect it to happen moving forward.
So, what I understand, then, I'm sorry, is that the AD, I mean, if you're going to put an ADU on an R1 lot, the ADU rules will control?
Correct. We, I think one of the, one of the biggest changes as part of the laws that were passed is what little regulatory control we had in terms of requiring replacement parking is almost entirely absent now at this point. It's not a predicament that any local jurisdiction likes to be in when it feels like they can't apply a minimum off-street parking requirement, especially in residential zones. I think that's exactly, though, what the state law intended to do was allow for the conversion and construction by way of addressing one of the most burdensome development standards that exists, and that's parking.
A lot of the questions I had did relate to parking requirements because it's clear that if you put an ADU on your lot, you don't have any parking requirements anymore. So, where are the people supposed to park? And we've seen, you know, just earlier, the code enforcement update, and I've seen it too, where, you know, they would start parking on their lawns or trying to convert their lawns to pavers and park there. I mean, I think it's going to be, it's going to be an issue. And, but I think rather than encourage them to do so, to start parking on their lawns or trying to convert their lawns to find alternate parking, what I propose is that we are, what I would like to take a poll of the councils to see if we would be interested in entertaining an amendment to our parking rules to therefore allow for parking permits, on-street parking permits in these situations, because they wouldn't necessarily technically fall within what we, you know, our current regulations to, for allowance of these overnight parking permits. But I would rather see those cars parked on the street than parked in front lawns. I guess that's what I'm saying.
I would actually comment that this really does, the ADU actually moots our whole parking scheme because in order to get the permit, you have to show that you have two garage spaces or three garage spaces, and the driveway is full before they'll give you the first parking permit, if you read through the way our parking...
That's what I'm saying.
So, I mean, this, but the ADU really just moots it right there because we don't have to have garage parking anymore.
I mean, you can imagine a whole, like, block that has nothing but ADU lots, then everybody's parked on the street. I agree. I'm just saying, like, if you have a normal single-family residence, then your parking, these parking requirements still apply, right? You have to have the two-car covered garage.
I'm going to build a one-square-foot ADU.
Right. So, you, well, but I'm saying, well, no, I think, isn't the minimum 500 or something like that?
Let's get rid of that part.
But it's true, actually, you could build a junior ADU, right? You know, just take a portion of your house and say, oh, that's a junior ADU, and now all of a sudden, your parking requirements have changed. Yeah, I mean, this part of it has not been thought out well by the state, but...
We need to address, I was about to say a comment all of my time.
Yeah.
We need to address the parking, yeah, I wholly agree with that, in light of what the ADU has done and just, not only that, but entirely, the entire parking.
Yeah, I agree. I've seen people, they've become very creative in trying to secure parking space in front of their homes, especially those homes that are by retail businesses. And I think we need, and Joe could probably tell us some stories there. I have, I've seen, like I said, very interesting resolutions that homeowners have taken upon themselves because they just can't get parking anymore in their front house. So, I agree that it would be very timely, especially with this ordinance, that we really look at it carefully.
If I can add to that, Mayor Pooh? And City Council staff has actually been working on that amendment, and will be bringing it back to the City Council sometime in either February or March to talk about those parking requirements citywide. City Council directed us to look at allowing, having parking permits allowed for everybody in the city without having to go through that.
So, just to add one more thing to that overhaul of the parking...
That's right.
...regime, I suppose, that we have here. Because really, we need to address that as a companion to this zone text amendment, which we're, you know, obviously, we have to pass because it's state law. The other clarification that I wanted to make is on lot coverage and FAR, fluria ratio calculations, the way I read our ordinance and the staff report, it's as if the first 800 feet of an ADU simply don't count at all towards FAR. So, is it my understanding that state law simply exempts that first 800 feet, 800 square feet?
Correct. So, I drew up this sample earlier today.
Okay. Thank you.
So, the orange shows the 800 square foot ADU that, according to state law, we must allow, regardless if the property is over lot covers, whether it's over FAR. However, the additional, in this case, 200 square feet shown in yellow can still be applied through the lot coverage and FAR. So, in some cases, if this property was already at the maximum 35%, they wouldn't be allowed to add that extra 200.
Right. But they would still, in a way, by right, be allowed to add the 800 square foot ADU?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Oh, last thing I wanted to ask is, does ADU construction or conversion trigger reassessment? Because I can only see a potential benefit here if, you know, you've just increased the habitable square footage by 800 at a minimum, right? Because nobody is going to not build less than 800. They have it completely sort of, you know, free pass at that. You know, maybe we get additional property tax revenue.
So, I think the answer is yes, but we haven't been given a lot of specifics from the county or any relevant state agency as to what the timing would be, what the cycle would be for reviewing them. Would it be something that happens in, you know, the same calendar year, the same fiscal year? We aren't getting those specifics, at least not yet. I'm assuming that that's something that will be fleshed out over time, given that these new laws have only been on the books for about a week now. I think that's something that will probably work itself out.
But we could probably...
Can I pull up on that?
Yes, please.
My understanding is that the, it will not affect the assessment of the main house?
Correct.
It will only be, because they're not going to re-trigger your whole property. It's just, and there are cases where the ADU may be assessed more than the main house because if you've had the house for a very long time, you're going to get a brand-new assessment on your ADU at current rates.
It's interesting because if you're a Prop 13, you know, grandfathered it 50 years ago, and you trigger reassessment, all of a sudden, your assessment's like over a million where you had an assessment of like 150,000.
Yeah. Your new one, so the main house square footage won't, but the new square footage will be assessed at the current rate. So, that creates a scenario where your ADU costs you more in taxes.
From the county assessor's office?
Yeah. So, this is there, and I think the state's going to address that now. People are trying to get the split roll at the same time, but they're trying to not assess on this. It's like, it's, they don't want to help us, in other words.
Well, hey, frankly, I would encourage them to, you know, if you're going to do this, the whole lot should be reassessed, right? I mean, you're developing more than whatever the normal...
25% of the reassessment, yeah. And this is, a lot of times, this is more than 25%.
Right. Well, but that's the counterbalance, right? You know, you want to generate additional revenue by building an ADU, and we're going to make it easier than, but I think it only makes sense that it obviously increases the value of your property, and then therefore, it should be reassessed at that point. But anyway, we'll see how it plays out. Okay, thank you. Any other questions or discussion? All right, is there...
Mayor, I just have a quick question. So, for instance, the junior ADUs or small ADUs, you know, because this new state law remove the sewer lines, the electricity, power voltage, and also you cannot eliminate, they use the propane for cooking or any of the things. So, we just talked about the neighborhood, you know, improvement units. There's, could be some kind of a, I don't know, fire hazard, health hazard, so cities still have responsibility, right? Still, we have to, so what is our criteria to approve, say, for instance, a small, you know, junior ADU, and they want a propane for cooking in their small studio room? So, how, how, how we can approve that? That's my question.
So, the junior ADU, again, it's constructed within the single-family home. So, it would still have to meet building code requirements, a part of the 2019 new building code requirements. It would have to meet health and safety, it would have to meet fire requirements, whether it's fire-rated walls that are separating the primary unit and the junior ADU. It would still have to comply with all the California building code.
I have a question for the council too, which is, should current applicants have to pay for a new application if they want to amend their applications under the new scheme? Because they were, they originally applied under a different regime of rules, and now we're remending it. Do we think that they should repay, pay again for a new application?
You don't? 170.
Anybody?
So, sorry, so the current site plan review fee is a fee of 170, just...
$170?
$170, correct.
And is that designed to be a cost recovery fee? Because that recovers nothing.
No, it's not. We probably burn through the 170 in the two to three hours that staff initially spends reviewing the application, to be quite honest.
Burn through it in the time that they spend at the counter explaining what they're doing to you.
Correct. That being said, I think one of the reasons why we proposed, if someone wants to make an adjustment or overhaul their project or their ADU, they need to withdraw, go through the process of withdrawing the existing application, submitting new plans, paying the new site plan fee, because, again, we burned through the original fee very soon after it walked through the door.
Understood. And why would this not be a cost recovery fee? Because, you know, if you add 800 square foot ADU, you're going to add, you could potentially, as Councilmember Harrington was saying, you could actually double or more than double the value of your property.
Sure. That's probably a larger policy discussion that the council may want to entertain. I think it's certainly true as it relates to ADUs. The square footage threshold for a small site plan review is 800 square feet. So, it's not just ADU applications that are paying a very, very modest fee, given the amount of improvement that will be had ultimately to the property.
You know, we've been doing, you know, updates to the fee schedule, and we're going to do another one in this piecemeal faction, but yeah, certainly, certainly, especially where the benefit that the applicant is getting out of it is, you know, so far, you know, disproportionately large compared to the fee, then I would say that I would certainly support us looking at not just this, but then, like you say, small, small site reviews, whatever, you know, I guess, is this something that would require NEXA study or something like that?
NEXA, yes.
Okay, so, I guess in connection with the mega meeting that we hopefully will have soon regarding financial items, then I would definitely want to look at all of these types of items where clearly it takes a lot of our staff time, and our fee is like miniscule compared to the benefit. to the benefit. Quite, another clarification then, is do the existing applicants get the benefit of the 60-day time period as well?
My understanding, just based on kind of where the 27 applications are at, the way, I compare the timetable for processing applications to kind of like the shot clock that exists for wireless applications. The clock starts ticking when the application is deemed complete. So sometimes we have folks turn in ADU applications, but we're missing items. Site plan doesn't have the correct dimensions, floor plan's wrong, we deem the application incomplete, the clock hasn't started ticking yet.
I see.
So I think the majority of those 27 applications that are kind of in stasis, the reason that they are is because they're incomplete applications right now.
Understood.
We'll process them in accordance with the new timetable, once they're deemed complete.
Thank you. Any other questions, or is there a motion?
Nobody wants to do it?
Yeah.
I mean, we have to do it, I mean.
So, I'll motion to approve, let me see, number 662, and there's two, let me see, resolution, right? 661 and 662. Or I have to separate them?
Well, we've got two ordinances as the recommended action. I, I guess for clarity, it might make sense to just vote on them separately.
Okay.
The, so the recommendation would be to approve by title only. We can do first the urgency ordinance, and then introduce by title only the first read of the regular version.
Okay. So the first one is 661, the urgency ordinance. I'll motion.
Okay. Motion and second. Is that good enough? Okay. Motion and second, let's go to the board.
Motion passes by a vote of 5-0.
Okay. And next one is a regular ordinance, 662, for first reading.
By title only.
By title only.
Waving further reading. Okay. All right.
I'll second.
Motion and second, let's go to the board.
Motion passes by a vote of 5-0.
Okay. Thank you. Next item, please.
New business, item A, acceptance of annual audit reports, fiscal year ended June 30th, 2019. Presentation will be made by management specialist and acting finance director Paula Chamberlain.
We're here tonight to present the comprehensive annual financial report for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2019. How did we get to the CAFER? It all starts with the budget. We adopted the 1819 budget on June 19th, 2018. We included the carryover appropriations in the budget in September 18. We did a 1920 budget study session with a review of the 1819 numbers in May of 2019. Finance closed the books, July through October. In 2018-19 year-end preview, we did with the first quarter budget report. And then the auditors started to prepare the actual, the auditors came in and did the audit, and we've brought it to you as presented to the council in accordance with the municipal code that you didn't approve tonight, but the fiscal sustainability, fiscal sustainability policy does have that in there. The city's audit, the responsibility for the audit starts with the city. City is responsible for the preparation and fair presentation of the financial statements that we then give to the auditors to review. The auditor expresses their opinion on the financial statements based on their audit in accordance with government auditing standards. That is, is it reasonable assurance that the statements are free of material misstatements? The current opinion is the financial statements present fairly in all material respects the financial position of the government activities, each fund, each major fund and the aggregate fund information. Our current auditors, Wyatt Nielsen, Dale Evans LLP, is a firm of licensed certified accountants. They performed the city audit since 2012-13. They had an initial contract for three years, it was extended for another three-year term, and then last year with the turnover in the finance director, we extended it for one year to do the 1819 audit. Our audit partner, Niten Patel, is here with us tonight. If you have any questions, he'll be able to answer them for us. We have the RFP that was released actually just today, hoping to bring back to council March 17th for a new audit, a new audit firm. Sections of the CAFER starts with the introductory section, includes the letter of transmittal written by staff, city officials, organization chart, the GFOA award from the prior year, which we did receive. Moving on to the financial section is the independent auditors' report, the management discussion and analysis section, financial statements for the government-wide governmental, proprietary, and fiduciary funds. Next section is the notes to the financial statements, which is quite lengthy and quite detailed, and then the supplementary information, which is on the pension, OPEB, and budgetary comparisons, and then your fund statements. And then last is the statistical section. Looking at the government-wide financials, this is the whole city. We had current assets in 2018 of, current assets and other assets of 25.5 million, capital assets of 61.7 million, total assets of 87.8, going down to the liabilities, 109. So the net effect of the city was two point, a negative 2.8 million dollars. Looking forward to 2018-19, the audit we just completed, you can see the little guy up there holding the arrow that says ACE trench. It was a $72 million project that was given to the city once ACE finished the project, and it increased our capital assets from 61.7 million to 134.6 million. Going down to the other little guy with his arrow, the OPEB liability went from 104 million to 123 million, and that was because we did not put money into the OPEB trust account this year. So overall, we went from a negative 2.8 million to 60 million, basically because of the ACE Again, on governmental funds, looking at revenue and expenses, we had 46.3 million dollars in revenue in 2018, and then 117 million in 2019, and again, that was because of ACE trench. Expenses were 49.8 million, went up to 55 million. Total, down at the bottom, we went from the net position from the negative 2.8 to the positive 60, again primarily due to the ACE trench. Looking at the general fund, we can take a look at, last year we had total assets of $10 million, this year we are down to $9 million, but our fund balance improved from the negative 2.6 million dollars to the positive 1.8 million dollars, or to the negative 1.8 million dollars, which is still an improvement over the negative 2.6 million. Taking a look at the budget to actuals, we had the adopted budget of 41.1 million dollars in revenue and transfers in. When we did the carryovers, we stayed at the 41 million dollars. The final amended budget was 42.8 million dollars in revenue and transfers, and most of that was just some transfer from other funds into this fund. Then our actuals came out at 38.7 million at the end of the year. When we look at the expenses and transfers, we started at 39.3 million dollars of the adopted budget, our actuals came out to 38 million dollars. So overall, the actuals to the amended budget was 91% for revenues, 93% for expenses. Taking a look just at the revenues, you can see the little pie chart in the top, 60% comes from taxes with another 20% from the transfers in. That transfer in is from the retirement tax fund, so basically 80% of general fund revenue is from taxes. Overall, we had the budget of 42.8 million dollars with the revenue and the retirement tax transfer in. Year-end estimate was $39 million, we came out with 30 point, 38.7 million dollars, so the actual to budget was 91%, but the actual to year-end estimate was actually 99%. Taking a look at the expenditures by department, the little pie chart at the top shows you that public safety is a priority within the city at 58% of the budget. The two departments overspent their budgets this year, human resources due solely to legal expenses that they had, and then community services, which is a whopping less than $1,700 immaterial in the scheme of the budget document, or the document total, and it was just a variety of different items. Again, the total budget with transfers out is 40.8 million dollars, actuals was 37.9 million dollars, so the budget expense was the 93%. Debt administration, this is our loans payable, which is the I-bank and the Citizens Business Bank loan for the public works facility. Compensated absences, which is what we would play, owe all of our employees if they all retire tomorrow. Claims payable is the amount that we have estimated in claims that have been submitted to the city that have not been determined yet. Some of these date back before we were in the JPIA, so they do carry on as a claims liability. Net pension liability and our net OPEB liability. So our liabilities went from 106 million dollars to 125 million dollars, again because of that OPEB liability where we didn't make a contribution into the trust fund. The retirement tax fund, the revenue for that fund was 7.7 million dollars, retirement expense was 6.7 million dollars, retiree health was 1.2 million dollars, so total expenses were 7.9 million dollars, almost 8 million dollars. The net was a negative 265,000 dollars of revenue over expense. Our beginning balance in that fund was 1.9 million dollars. With the, the amount that we used that year, we ended the fund balance with a 1.6 million dollar fund balance. Looking forward and taking this into looking at 1920, so it's not in this report, but just to get a head start on next year's budget, the retirement revenue is estimated at 8.17 million dollars. That does include the revised amount that we talked about at first quarter. So total revenue is 8.1. Retirement expense is budgeted at 7.8, with retiree health at almost 1.4. So we're looking at the net of this year of almost 1.1 million dollars, with that beginning fund balance of 1.6 million dollars. We will end the year with about 575,000 dollars going forward into the 2021 budget process. CalPERS, up in the top, we have the unfunded liability of pension 60 point, 67.3 million dollars provided by a third-party independent actuary. The information below is from our CalPERS actuary evaluation reports. And just kind of some interesting information for you, the number of active participants in our plan, in 1718, tier one, we had 113, we've now gone down to 94. And tier two is 25, 21, and went to 25. And then PEPRA is 40 to 59. And taking a look at the little pie chart down in the middle, it shows you that we have 33% of our employees in PEPRA. So eventually, we'll end up with more PEPRA employees than tier one. The chart on the left is the active participation distribution by tier and group. So you see that we have more safety tier one employees than we have miscellaneous employees, and we get down to PEPRA, we have more miscellaneous employees in PEPRA than we have safety employees. Taking a look over at the right-hand side, the required payments for unfunded liability, the CalPERS changed a couple of years ago, that we now pay for a normal cost and a separate payment for unfunded liability, which is a flat dollar amount. And they, we paid for the 2019-20 and 2020-21, we know those exact amounts, and they have given us estimates for the five following years, and as you can see, that they will grow each of those years. The OPEB part of it, the other post-employment benefits, the liability, actuarial liability is 44.4 million dollars. Taking a look just at this plan, if your employees retired prior to September 1st, 2003, they receive 150 dollars a month. If they retire after that, based on resolution 0327, it's a tiered amount based on your years of PERS service and city service. So if you are in PERS for 20 years, and five of, five of those years have been with the city, you get the maximum amount that they provide. Taking a look at the number of employees receiving these benefits, it's 115 in 2017-18, and it grew to 127 in 1819. The monthly max rate per retiree goes up by a PERS formula, it's not tied to what the city provides. So in 2017-18, it was 1766, and it's grown to 1788. Your current employees receive 1568. So your retirees are reserving more in health benefits than your current employees. Just taking a look at the growth in the retiree cost in a little chart there, back in 02-03, it was a very small amount, I believe it was around 25,000 dollars, and it is now up to that 1.3 million. Cash management.
Paula, may I ask a question on that previous slide? The, so this max rate per retiree, is it independent of who, of what retirees actually select and use?
No, it's the max rate that they get towards their health plan.
So it does depend upon what they use?
Yes. They don't get cash back.
Right. No, I, that, that, that much, thank goodness. There's no cash out option for that. No, but I'm just, I was just wondering if, you know, it's just a formula where they would calculate your, the number of your retirees times this monthly rate, and that's what you need to pay for the OPEB?
No. We get an actual bill of the individual retiree.
It's based on actual, actual cost, what they're actually using. Thank you.
Yes.
Mayor, can I have a question? So for OPEC, we just missed one year of contribution, and that increased 20 million dollars? That's just, you know, unthinkable.
We were putting money into the trust based on what they had estimated would take us to, it would take for us to not have a big balloon payment at the end of the amount, because we didn't make that this year. They assumed that we're never gonna make it again, which I told them that, you know, we're just not making it this year because we don't have the money. We'll look forward in the next year to see what we were going to do. They still took it as that we were not contributing to it, and it did up the, the liability. Cash management, last year we had 22.9 million dollars, this year we had 22.7 million dollars, so it's pretty consistent across all funds. Capital assets, which includes all of your land, your sewer lines, your streets, sidewalks, total assets are, in 2018, were 137 million, now they are 214 million. Again, that's the very valuable ACE trench, which I don't believe you could sell to anyone, but it's still booked as an asset to the city. We have some fund balance deficits in, in the document this year. General fund, again, went from the 2.6 million dollars to an improved 1.8 million dollar deficit. The Mission Playhouse remained consistent at 223,000 dollar deficit. SLESA, the, one of the police grants that we had, had a negative 77,000 dollars, it improved to 24,000 dollars. At the end of each year, the state goes through and sees if they have any extra money in the fund for that program. If they do, they distribute it to the cities. So we got an extra payment last year that brought us and helped us with this deficit. The successor agency was carrying 181,000 dollar deficit. We did have to close that into the general fund. I talked a little bit about that at first quarter. But overall, we went from a negative 3 million dollar deficit to a negative 2 million dollar deficit. So in one year, we closed a third of the deficit. Inoffund borrowing, per the inoffund borrowing policy that the council adopted by resolution 1926, we are to report back to the city council where we borrowed the money from. So the 9.5 million dollar deficit that we had in the general fund, which is their cash deficit plus the amount that we have to borrow to cover the 6.6 million dollar restricted cash requirement for the Citizens Business Bank loan, is covered by a loan from sewer assessment of 5 million, the development impact fee by 4 million, and waste management fund by 523. Mission Playhouse had a cash deficit of 117,000, and that was covered by waste management. The police grant fund borrowed its money from waste management, and CDBG was carrying a deficit, a cash deficit at the end of the year, because of the receivables coming in after the end of the year of 63,000. So we've, our total borrowing was 9.7 million dollars. This money is borrowed on June 30th and repaid on July 1. This money is borrowed on June thirtieth and repaid on July one. Just to go over the fiscal actions by the city council this year, from March till January today, we, you've seen four budget documents, two proposed, two final. And actually, you have in your, your chairs tonight, the final documents for the operating and the CIP budget. We had a new comprehensive fee schedule, two CAFR presentations, including the one tonight, four revised policies for the fiscal sustainability, fund balance, investment policy, and in-fund borrowing, three ordinance changes that includes the one that didn't go tonight, so you've seen them, but you didn't approve them all, ten cash and investment reports, and eight miscellaneous finance reports. And the last one is my, last attempt at my animation customization. Paula Chamberlain says goodbye to the city of San Gabriel and welcomes the new interim finance director on Monday, Ken Louie. So, with that, I want to thank you for the opportunity to serve you, and I'm stand ready to answer any questions.
Thank you, Paula. And I think we can all agree that you've done an excellent job in being able to present and information, you know, clearly, concisely, understandably, and also with, you know, fun animations. Yeah. So, are there any questions? All right, well, can I ask first, let's see, when can we expect then the, or was this meant to be the comparison of the CAFR to what was budgeted in eighteen nineteen?
This is the comparison. I had the comparison charts in there, and I also gave you a comprehensive review at first quarter. Those numbers didn't change between now and here because we were pretty much set with those, so this is the end of it.
Okay. Questions? Vice Mayor Machaco.
Okay. I just wanted to start with the organizational chart. I know it's not the numbers, but under commissions, it lists civil service, design review, parks and rec, which should be community services now, planning, and then we also need to add our historical preservation and cultural resource mission, so if that could please be updated.
It will be updated on the Internet version.
Great. And then I have three questions, I believe, yeah. So, the good news is with the audit report, we showed a surplus. So, we're going in the right direction. So, we were able to reserve, reduce our deficit from two point six to one point eight. So, that's the good news. We entered into a long-term financial plan, and some of the things that came to mind were, you know, we're going to make sure that our operating expenses don't exceed revenues, which should be very basic. We're right in the midst of the effort to try to pass Measure SG, which will bring in about three million, three point four million, and it's, you know, it'll be a steady stream annually. We have the new hotel, and eventually, it'll bring in about a million in TOT. We're going to have, we have a fiscal sustainability policy. And so, my question to you, since this is your last meeting, is there anything else that we should be doing to help us rebound from this fiscal situation that we're in? I mean, are you optimistic that we can turn it around? We can have a positive reserve by, I think it's twenty twenty-one?
I am. We've put in a lot of controls in place that we needed, and we have the adopted budget this year that is balanced with a small surplus, but balanced, and provides for some unforeseen events. So, we have a little buffer in that budget as well. We start the budget process for two thousand twenty twenty-one, the end of this week, with a kickoff with employees of what's changed, what's new, and starting the process there. I can't think of anything else we need to do. We do have hopes of the ballot measure, and if, in the event that, that doesn't come to fruition, that we are also looking at what we have to do to balance next year's budget to bring you a balanced budget.
And all the directors are involved, and they're accountable for their budgets?
Absolutely.
Okay, great. Let's see, the, you know, I wanted to just kind of mention, one of our meetings, we talked about the consequences from having a negative reserve. It was mentioned that, you know, that may just come into play when we have an emergency of some sort. But I, I just wanted to discuss what that negative deficit really means. It's beyond just a number, and I want to make sure I understand it and the public understands it and my colleagues, that when we have a negative reserve, and it's a significant amount, it affects our credit rating. We can't borrow money, for example, to build a police station until we can correct it. We can't, we have state auditors who are scrutinizing our records, and we may be forced to do a two hundred thousand dollar audit with, really, I'm not sure how helpful whatever they do come up with is going to be. And then we also are using cash funds, as you showed in one of your slides, that we're spending money that may not have been, you know, originally planned for, for certain purposes, because we have to move things around to be able to cover some of the required services. So, since we can't sell like our main assets, like sewer lines and streets, I mean, that's, makes us very different from a business where we truly do have assets that can be sold, you know, if, if needed. Can you address some of the other consequences that come when you have a negative deficit, just to, so we can be on heightened awareness? I mean, I think we're trying to do everything we can so we don't, you know, walk in the same path again.
I should have pointed out one of the, of the little charts. On this chart here, where we're borrowing, up at the top right-hand corner, is a graph of the general fund cash from July two thousand eighteen to December two thousand nineteen, and it goes downward because they're all negative. We, not in eighteen months did we ever get a positive cash balance in the general fund. And so, that means that we're borrowing from our other funds all year long. So, those other funds do have either requirements to spend the money or plans to spend that money. If something major happened in, in the sewer assessment fund, or we went ahead with some of the projects that we had planned in the development impact fees, we wouldn't have that cash to borrow. There are a lot of funds that we have in the city that we cannot borrow from, gas tax, Measure R, Measure A, I mean, Prop A, Prop C, Measure R, Measure M. We can't use those, or we risk losing them, or they end up putting them in a escrow account, and we have to draw down and all that. So, we want to make sure that we don't use those restricted funds. But it also means that we're dependent on these funds having this cash. If something should happen and they need the cash right away, then we would have some cash flow problems in the, the city. The only reason why we don't have cash flow problems at this point is because we are using the funds from others, the money from other funds, which is not good practice. Obviously, that's why the state's looking at us for liquidity, because they're looking at not just city liquidity, but liquidity within the general fund, because each fund is supposed to be able to stand alone on its own. And a lot of cities need the borrowing from month to month and all that, but a great deal of them, you know, make it above the line during the year. Even when we get our property tax, you can see the, the deficit does go up a little bit when I get our property tax and our in-lube fees and those type things, but then when we have to pay our payroll and those type things, it goes back down again until we get the next cycle of payments. So, it's just not good practice. And going out to borrow money, they want to see that you have the ability to repay it. So, if you do want to do the police facility, at this point, I don't believe you could because you wouldn't be able to prove that you have the ability to repay the debt. They don't want the facility. You, you use it as the collateral for doing that, but they don't actually want the building. So, it's just, that's why we have the, the fund policy of seventeen percent, so you have the cash reserves to keep you going from month to month and year to year.
Okay. And along those lines, are there any updates on the CDs that we have on our Public Works? Because I thought we were going to try to renegotiate, because that's a significant amount of money that's being tied in, into those CDs with, when would they have the collateral of the building?
Right. I don't think we can renegotiate them. We have looked at a variety of different ways to refinance them, and my replacement would be looking at that. I have a list of things that we didn't get done, but I have contacted at least two other financial places that would refinance that for us.
Okay, great. Let's see, and then lastly, you know, the audit, it, it all, and the mayor mentioned it, it just gives you a reasonable assurance. They're not testing every single, you know, posting, you know, there's material misstatement. I mean, that's, again, material. What does that mean? We can't do a fraud assessment or, you know, like Placencia did or Bell because it's so cost prohibitive. I mean, they would have to go through every single transaction. And you've mentioned before, you haven't seen any indication of fraud because it's such a high bar. Perhaps there's negligence, but at this point, there's no fraud. And so, my concern is that, back to the management warning, you know, it wasn't in the audit report, but it was so buried in the back, and, you know, it wasn't being brought up freely, so, you know, the summary, I think, is a good idea. But going forward, I, I just wanted to, again, see if you can provide some assistance or further assurances that, you know, we've become better stewards of these public funds, that by codifying our presentations, you know, from, by the auditor, they have to, has to be on an agenda. We have the auditors here to answer any questions. We have fiscal sustainability policies. Hopefully, we can also codify the city attorney being notified. But are there any other things that we could be doing that maybe we haven't mentioned, you know, in our ordinance, or is there anything else you would like to, to add since it's your last meeting?
[laughing]
That we could do, because I'm trying to have a checklist, is like, what else can we do to, to make this even tighter, to always have best practices? I know you have twenty years of experience with your previous city, and, you know, I just, I'm trying to get whatever I can in your last meeting.
I think I've thrown in everything, including the kitchen sink of what I could think to do to, to make it so that you were notified and, and that it didn't occur again. The information was there, it's just so complicated and voluminous that it is tough to go through. So, I think if you have the council presentation, the city manager involvement in it, I think that should be sufficient. If you have the city auditors at the meeting, whether they give the presentation or staff gives the presentation, they're enabled to answer questions. And again, we stand ready to, if you'd like to ask the auditor any questions. I think that's the, the most I came up with, so.
Okay, great. Well, and then lastly, I did, well, you kind of beat me to the punch there. I just wanted to say, I guess this is really a goodbye farewell, because I think we've said goodbye to you before.
You did.
But it's been a real pleasure, having our conversations, having you at the meetings, you know, being just, I, I never realized how fast you speak, too.
Yes, I do.
Really speak very quickly and, and, but with, you know, great resolution there. I mean, you know what you're talking about, but I just wanted to, again, you know, thank you for your dedication. I know you were working very long hours, and, you know, you were on a mission, and I think you got a lot done, you know, based on the fact that there was so much that had to be done. You know, your expertise is very impressive, and, and I hope that, you know, you'll still be available for, for the, the new person that will be joining us. But, but anyway, I just, that was all. Thank you, Paula, for everything.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, can I, yes, well, I actually, I'm really concerned about the unfunded pension liabilities. You know, it's a hundred and twenty-five million dollars. It's not a small amount of money. So, how can we kind of, you know, bring down this amount of money? Other cities, maybe they did this pension obligation bond, and some city did well, you know, because of the right timing, but some city did it wrong, and actually make the debts even bigger. So, that is not a, for us right now, I don't think it's a good solution. So, do you have any ideas that we can kind of reduce that pension fund?
I, I don't have any suggestions to reducing that, or thinking to concentrate on the deficit within the general fund and get that one up in a positive position before you can start making any kind of contributions to a trust fund for your pensions, or even looking at any other type of refinancing for that.
Right, right, right. So, you mentioned the trust fund. As I understand, there's a Section one-one-five trust fund, and some, you know, company, management company, they can handle our pension money, and they can tell us what is the right amount of money we pay off. Do you suggest that we should hire a reputable company and set up aside its one-fifteen trust fund?
We have the, the trust fund for the OPEB liability, and there is six million dollars sitting in that account. And that's the, the fund that we didn't make a contribution to this year because we couldn't afford to, and that's what led to the increased liability. So, we already have that in place. When the city is in a financial position to be able to make contributions to that, it would be a good idea to continue those or to restart those. But again, until you get in a positive cash position and a positive fund balance position, I think that, that's where the focus needs to be.
Okay. Another way to reduce the pension, maybe we can utilize this sales tax measure. If we can take fifty percent of, out of this three point some million dollars and, you know, contributes to the pension, do you think, is it allowed, or do you think it's a good idea?
Well, it would be allowed, but again, there's current financial considerations that you have to make, and even if the, you're successful in getting that, your costs are still increasing, and you have the deficit that you have to cover, so it'd still be a couple of years before you'd even be into any position to consider that, in my opinion.
Okay. And regarding that, the, the money that we borrow for Public Works, you know, that's seven point eight million from Citizens Business Bank. As I understand, the principal is reducing, and it's a ten-years term. So, you already talked to a, a company that can do a revise, right, refi for us?
It's a ten-year term until you have to redo it.
Okay.
It's not, and I believe by the time of the ten years, it's still five million dollars or a payment, something like that. So, it's not done in ten years. And we've already talked to a couple of companies that could do it now, and they were, one of them was waiting for our CAFR to come out to see if we had made any improvements. And again, we'll be bringing that back to the council probably in the next couple of months or by year end.
Okay, okay. Well, still, I, I think, you know, we have to bring the, our finance situation to a posit, positive cash flow. But, you know, if we want to do this pension obligation bond, not now, you know, because this is sort of the height of the stocks market. We want to do it when it's low, and, but, you know, we can wait a year or a couple of years and see what the, this, you know, volatility will, will end. But my, my concern is, because we don't have any credit rating before, and we never have anything that, you know, evaluate our capital assets. For instance, we just received seventy-two million dollars, so that's good news. But actually, for the, the total cost of the Ace construction is three hundred and thirteen million dollars. And I don't know, you know, you said, what can I sell, or?
Right.
I, yeah, maybe you can negotiate with the, the railroad company. Otherwise, we, we don't let them use it. And, no, actually, they own the tracks, but, but I don't know, you know, because it's, it's something that we should be able to utilize if we want to do bond or borrowing money later on. So, I just thought, maybe we should think about that one, you know, it's seventy-two million.
Well, that'd be at least a couple of years down the road, so we can take a look at it then.
Okay, all right, thank you. Oh, and I just wanted to commend you, you did such a great job. You're an amazing lady.
Thank you.
It's just so amazing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pooh. I too, Paula, and just thank you for your months of service.
I too, Paula, and just thank you for your months of service. You've been a blessing to the city and you have shined a light, a very bright light in how we need to be moving forward responsibly with our fiscal upcoming years. So thank you for that, and your reporting is fabulous. We should all take lessons from you in how to do it. And again, I'm just waiting for you to stand there and say, "I'm going to Disneyland," because your days are up. So enjoy, and we hope to see you back.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, Paula, I'd just like to echo what Councilor Marcus Tanzo said. We do appreciate, we wish you had, we had your services longer. We do appreciate the fact you stepped into a difficult situation and really smoothed over some of our issues, highlighted to council what we can do, where we're at, and set a really solid plan for the next Finance Director. I really think you've really paved the way, and I couldn't think of a better person in that role, so we really appreciate your work. Thank you.
Thank you.
And will you have at least some time to be able to transition all the momentum to the new interim Finance Director?
Yes. We'll be working a little bit. I'll be available to him by phone or Mark or whatever, I just don't disappear, so.
Great.
Put a lot into the city. I like the city, I enjoy working here. All your employees are just great. Your directors are a great bunch of group, so yeah, I'll be available.
Thank you. I do have a question for our independent auditor. Hi.
Hi.
Could you introduce yourself?
Nitin Patel, I'm a partner with White Nose and D. Levens.
So when Tom Marston was our Finance Director, did you encounter, ever encounter evidence of malfeasance or wrongdoing?
No.
Could you elaborate? Can, like by saying, can you give more descriptive summary of your experience in working with Tom?
I think you asked the question, and I think the response is no. I think that, I'm not sure how you want me to elaborate.
Can you describe the working relationship with Tom Marston?
We communicated in terms of, I primarily reviewed the work. The work was done by our manager who worked with Linda. We issued all our reports to, they're all addressed to City Council. And all our reports that we issued each year included planning letters to those in charge of governance. We also issued the communications at the end of the audit. We also issued our report on internal control or financial reporting and our opinion. So those are all done through Tom. That was the working relationship. In the last year, we did have some very strong discussions related to the budget. And when we discussed the liquidity issues, we had to go back and he had provided us some information, and we actually kind of went through that very thoroughly to make sure that we understood those numbers.
By last year, which fiscal year would that be?
Well, I believe 1718. But we did, just for your information, we did put a comment in our report.
I recall that there was a warning about
In the previous year.
Lack of, lack of financial controls. I recall that very clearly.
Yeah, in the previous year. And then in the following year, I believe that because of the significant deficit, I met with Mark and we had a meeting with my manager to discuss because I wanted to make sure that that was being communicated to the city manager.
At any time during the time that you've been engaged as our independent auditor, did you also communicate with their city manager, Steve Preston?
I did not.
Did your firm?
Not to my recollection, no. I was a partner, so if there had been any communication, it would have been done through me. But to my recollection, I'm not, I did not communicate with the city manager, the previous city manager.
Do you remember which fiscal year it was that you had that significant warning about internal controls?
You know, I think it was 1617, but that's just off memory. I don't know. I know, I think it's 1617, it could have been the year before, I just don't know. I did not review all the letters before I came here.
And by concern, I think about lack of controls, can you explain in plain English what that means?
It had to do with, again, this is my recollection, because you're, I was not prepared to answer these questions.
I understand.
This almost seems like we're going back in history, but it's my recollection that
The whole thing is historical, right?
It had to do with the liquidity and the borrowing from other funds.
And I guess what you mean by that is lack of liquidity and the inter-fund borrowings that were, was being used to cover up, or cover, to cover for that lack of liquidity?
I believe that's what it is. I really would have to look at the comment.
And yet, as I recall, it was a clean opinion.
That's correct.
How do you view the role of the independent auditor in general? If information is being provided to you by finance, I guess to what extent do you or your firm investigate as to the veracity of that information?
Well, I believe we've done everything according to what our protocols are. We did issue all the reports. We worked through your management. To a certain extent, we have to work through them. We don't report unless there's a request by management to report. So I believe in all the years, we've always issued our reports to the City Council. We've always issued the reports that are required. And so I think that we did the proper, appropriate protocol.
You don't need to feel defensive, I'm not on the warpath against you.
No.
So just, I mean, do you, to what extent do you try, have any efforts to verify the veracity of the information provided to you?
I think in my last year, I think that was why I met with Mark. Because I just felt, I felt
Because you felt, yes, go ahead, please.
Well, I felt that we had two years, the deficit went from, I believe, 2.5 to, I think it was 4.8 in the following year. And I just felt that in the previous years, that had not been such a, because it was a pattern now that was happening. So I felt that it was a point where I had to meet with Mark. Because I'm not sure, again, at that point, I think we just wanted to communicate with him to make sure that I expressed my concerns, at least, again, Mark is part of management. So we went, we came and met with him.
So you used the word concerned. You were concerned about the trend of increasing deficits that, and you wanted to meet, you, in this case, you reached out to our current city manager, Mark Lazarus, correct?
Through Tom, I insisted that we meet with, we were doing the work back in, I think it was November or December, and I said I wanted to make sure I met with the city manager before we issued any of our reports.
And in this meeting, was Tom also present?
Yes, he was.
For clarification, Mr. Mayor, there was a time when Tom was not in the office, when the auditor and I met alone, one-on-one.
And how many meetings would that have been?
Just the same day, but part of the meeting was with Tom and part of the meeting was with the auditor.
We met without, Tom was excused after the initial introduction.
What was discussed when Tom was not in the room?
I prefer not to answer that right now. I think, well, I think
Can you provide a rationale for not wanting to discuss that?
Yeah, I feel like you're an attorney and you're kind of setting this up, so.
I am.
Well, then I think, at this point, I think my response was to come and talk about the audit. I'd be glad to talk to the city manager, can be there, he was there for the meeting. I think I had a manager there for the meeting. So I prefer not to respond to that because at this point, I'm not sure where we're going with this. And I've given you the basic information that I think I needed. And actually, I'm a little concerned that you are trying me right now.
I'm not necessarily trying you. I'm trying to understand the process by which we resulted in negative cash balances in the general fund, when we were never really made aware of that until earlier this fiscal year.
I would not agree with that comment because we did put a comment in our report on internal control of our financial reporting in 1617. Again, we work on the audit through management. That's not 1718, this is the year before that. So, and I don't know
So that report would have been, would have been delivered to us in about like January of 2018, is that correct?
Possibly, yeah. And again, I don't recollect if we did anything in the year before, but I think my recollection is I did talk about this with Mark in the meeting, that we did bring a copy of the letter.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Yes, ma'am.
A little bit of follow-up. I think part of the issue here that I'm feeling uncomfortable too is, it's starting to feel like we're going to personnel issues, and I know we need to be
Well, that's why I didn't want to
Real careful about that. But let's just go back to that moment. Now that you, because you've been here from the beginning for the meeting, so I thank you for being here from the beginning. Now you know that part of what we are codifying is the fact that we want the auditors to come to the meetings and to keep us informed, as well as the attorney, if there's some type of management warning. If that was in place back then, when you started feeling like, you know, this is elevating to another level, how would, and it's in our ordinance now, how would you have done it differently? Would you have come to our meeting and shared in public that you were concerned? Or just because we're bringing it back, so I want to make sure it's not just words. I mean, what can we do to remedy it? So we go back two years and we, you know, something was in place already. What would be different? I mean, how would you have done it differently? Because we're asking that type of information, even though, you know, part of it is personnel-related, but the information be made public. I mean, is there
Well, I would recommend that you have either a finance or an audit committee.
So really, what we've done tonight is irrelevant, it sounds like?
No, I don't think it is. I'm just talking about if you, because we work through management, and if you wanted to have direct interaction with auditors, you can have the meeting with the auditors prior to the start of an audit. And at the conclusion, many of the cities do have what they call audit committees, where auditors will make a presentation and they go into, you know, you would discuss the management letter comment that we had. So if you wanted to have a situation where maybe you just, you know, I mean, Paula's done a good job, but if you think that the auditors, because when the auditors come, they will present what the comments are. So if I was here at the meeting, I would have presented what the comment was. I wasn't here at the meeting. Again, we don't go to all the meetings because the management will then present it to City Council. But you know, as you asked the question, maybe an idea would be to form an audit committee.
Okay. Because I, since that comment, as you mentioned several times, is already in the report, it would just be a matter of highlighting it during your moment, your time. I guess at that point, I just feel like, going back two years ago, you know, fast forward, wouldn't that be something that you would do, that you would feel comfortable with? Because you're just, you know, reciting what's in the report, which is a public document. But it sounds like you would still feel uncomfortable. You would prefer to have an audit committee or you would
No, I would have presented the comment, it's a public document. I mean, it's in our report on internal control or financial reporting. The only thing I did want to discuss is what our discussion was, because I think that's getting into personnel issues.
Yeah, and I agree with you. But what would you have said two years ago? Would you have said, you know, we
I would have said exactly what the comment was that we had in writing, because that is a public document. And so I would not feel uncomfortable. And the only reason I'm suggesting an audit committee is if you wanted to have maybe somebody direct interaction with the auditors, that you could have, you could form a committee, you know, it's subject to having, you could have council members, you could have a couple of members from the public or city manager. I think it's subject to the Brown Act, I think some of them are. But you could have that kind of a meeting where you could probably ask more in-depth questions if you wanted to. But again, this is a process that your city doesn't have, but you could potentially do that if you wanted to do that.
All right, thank you. And yeah, I'll just say a few words about Paula and your service. You know, of course, you know, one thing we can promise is that we're not boring. And I think that, you know, along with a lot of this, what I, I think even, you know, it's the kind of thing where you're climbing a mountain, from my perspective, you know, since coming onto the council, I feel like there's been tremendous amount of change, you know, organizationally already. And it's clear to me, though, that we still need, we still have a ways to go in terms of cultural reform, you know? And I think that the direction that we're heading in is in large part due to a lot of your efforts. So I want to thank you for that, and I hope that, you know, that we can continue this momentum so that we don't find ourselves in these kinds of situations in the future. And, you know, when I say us, I don't necessarily even mean us as individuals, I mean us as a city, as an entity, as a municipal corporation that will hopefully continue to exist, you know, long after any of us individually are even around even. So I think that, you know, it's been an eventful year from that perspective, and I hope that some of the things that, you know, we can still accomplish in the next few months will help the current situation. But it feels like, you know, what I, what I'm disappointed, not by you personally, but you know, is that it feels like this will take several years to sort of rectify, you know? It won't just be, and then, of course, at the same time, there's all these other looming and mounting things. There's no way to actually get out from under OPEB and UAL and stuff like that. So then you add on to that potentially like stormwater or whatever else, you know, that is just going to be foisted upon the shoulders of cities and it's impossible really for any, for any city, no matter how much revenue they generate to actually meet all these obligations. So in any case, you know, I want to echo the comments of my colleagues and thank you for your service and bringing to light a lot of things which probably should have been, you know, brought forward earlier. And then hopefully from this, we can learn lessons and I think now I'm starting to favor the idea of this audit committee and make it more so that the independent auditors report. I mean, I know that, you know, on paper, the report is directed to the City Council, but as he's mentioned several times, he works through management, through the Finance Director. So there's that opportunity for, you know, a lens to be put in between that independent audit and, you know, the City Council, which also, frankly, the only elected people sitting in this room are the City Council members. So, although I guess there's a Water Board member here, right? Okay.
City Clerk.
Oh, yes, our elected city clerk. Oh, yes, our elected city clerk. Actually, I do have a question about that. Why do we have an elected city treasurer? We should examine that. I don't understand why, yeah, why do we have an elected- So, well, let's suffice to say this is not over. I mean, I don't think this is going to be over. Have we heard yet from the state auditors as to what their opinion will be?
We have not. I had that in my list of city manager comments to make, but I'll make them now. We're still sending information their way as of as late as Friday morning, and we expect to hear from them, according to them, any day on whether they're going to recommend us for a full-blown audit or whether they're going to put us on their list to watch in future years.
So, they've still been requesting additional information?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. All right, next item, please. Oh, do we?
Yes, so I'll motion to receive the file.
Okay, I'll second. Let's go to the board.
Motion passes by a vote of five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Next item.
Adoption of Resolution Number 20-03, approving the appointment of Kenneth L. Louis to interim finance director, and Resolution Number 20-04, updating the authorized list of designated city officials to open, maintain, and make transactions in city accounts in various banks and financial institutions. Presentation will be made by Human Resources and Risk Management Director Edward Macias.
Good evening, Ms. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Before you, Item 6B requests your approval of Resolution Number 20-03, which approves an employment agreement with Calpersanuitent Kenneth L. Louis for interim finance director, and Resolution 20-04, which removes outgoing acting finance director Ms. Paula Chamberlain and adds incoming interim finance director Kenneth L. Louis to the list of signatories on the city's various financial accounts. The term of the agreement with Mr. Louis is limited to 960 hours pursuant to his 960 status as a Calpersanuitent. And his agreement does have a final expiration date of December 31, 2020, with a clause that reserves the right of either party to terminate the agreement at any time prior to that without cause. Mr. Louis does have some significant background in public finance, so he does bring a significant amount of experience to the city. Mr. Louis has over 34 years of experience in public finance. During his career, he has worked for the city of Montebello, city of Southgate, and most recently, the city of Lawndale, where he served as finance director for the last 13 and a half years and just retired in December of 2018. The cost of Mr. Louis' contract should not exceed $81,552 for the remainder of this fiscal year, based on the pay rate for the finance director position and the number of total hours that he can work, which would be 960 hours. These, the fiscal impact and the cost of his services should be, they are encumbered in the current year budget, so there really is no fiscal impact in terms of asking for additional appropriation. I'm available for any questions regarding Mr. Louis' appointment.
And just to clarify, we will get 960 until 6:30, 20, and then another 960 from 7:31?
Oh, no, I'm, correct. So, and we actually get 960 through December, or July 31st, I'm sorry, June 30th of this year, 2020, and then we'll get another 960 hours through December 31st of next fiscal year. So, really almost having him nearly full-time for the two halves of the year.
Thank you. Any questions?
And just for a bit of trivia, if you all remember, Jayden Louis, who was in our community development department-
Yeah.
Ken is her dad.
Oh, nice. Okay, great. Is there a motion? Okay, motion and second. Let's vote on the board.
Motion passes by a vote of five zero.
Next item, please. Thank you.
Adoption of Resolution Number 20-05, authorizing the amendment of the salary schedule to comply with California minimum wage requirements effective January 1, 2020.
So, before you is Item 6C, which requests your approval of Resolution Number 20-05, which incorporates the new minimum wage into the city's authorized salary schedule. The new minimum wage did increase to $13 an hour as of January 1, 2020. The minimum wage increase is part of SB 3. The bill was passed in 2016, and SB 3 increases the minimum wage up to $15 an hour by the year 2022, January 1 of 2022. There are 13 part-time limited services positions that are impacted by the minimum wage increase to $13 an hour. Of those 13 positions, six positions will be moved to $13 an hour at the very first step. The first step will be $13 an hour with four additional increases, a 5% increases, and they will top out at $15.80 per hour. So, that would be step E. For the other five, I'm sorry, the other six part-time positions that are impacted by this, those will be moved, step A of those positions will be moved to $13.65 per hour. And that represents a 5% increase over the latter six positions. And the reason for that is for internal equity and/or what we call in human resources to mitigate for compaction. The latter, the seven positions that will be starting at $13.65, they essentially have slightly greater responsibilities. And so, it's warranted to actually have a 5% differentiation between those positions and the other positions that start at $13 an hour. And so, those positions are, the positions that will be increased in the part-time of limited services schedule would be park maintenance helper, increased to $13 an hour, park lot, parking lot attendant, $13 an hour, pool concession attendant, $13, pool cashier, $13, stage technician at $13, and also usher at $13. Box office staff, concession staff, lifeguard instructor, recreation leader, senior parking attendant, senior stage technician, and senior usher will be increased at step eight at $13.65 per hour, showing you that 5% differentiation between the prior classifications. In addition to the part-time positions that are being increased, there is one full-time position that's being increased to $13 an hour, and that is the groundskeeper level-one position, which currently falls under the, currently does not meet the $13 an hour standard. If you have any questions, I'm available for questions regarding that.
Questions? Motion?
Motion to approve?
Okay, motion and second. Let's go to the board.
Motion passes by a vote of five zero.
All right, thank you. Next item.
Public comment. Comments are limited to three minutes. If you wish to address the city council, we request that you please complete a speaker's request card and hand it to the clerk. When speaking, please state your name for the record.
Is there any member of the public who would like to address the San Gabriel City Council? Okay, seeing none, I will close public comment. Next item.
City managers' report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Just a couple of quick items for you tonight. The first one was the state audit. We've covered that. The second one would be our sales tax measure. We're going to be giving three presentations this week to various community groups, including Kiwanis, Rotary, and the Chamber of Commerce, and we'll be doing several more next week and the weeks following. We are more than happy to give educational and outreach presentations to any groups that request it from the community or any groups that council would like us to attend. So, please pass that information along to either myself or Arminay, and we will schedule those presentations. The directors are all taking part in those presentations, and whatever groups they're belonging to, we're going to be giving those presentations. And in addition to that, we have our frequently asked questions on the website, as well as several other pieces of information related to the sales tax measure. We are monitoring questions that we receive from the public and on social media, and if we get answers or, excuse me, questions that seem like they should be included in the frequently asked questions or questions that come up often, we are amending those frequently asked questions and adding those as we get to that. We are doing a video that we'll have available on the website that we will prepare, and several other avenues as well. All of this is being worked on through our consultant team and the city attorney's office to make sure that it is staying within the confines of outreach and not any sort of electioneering, which is what we are bound by. So, that is hot and heavy, starting today and going through March the 3rd.
What are the three groups this week?
I believe this week is Kiwanis, the Chamber of Commerce, and- Arminay, can you add to that?
Rotary.
Thank you.
Rotary.
Good evening. Yes, we are confirmed tomorrow night to be presenting to the chamber, and the city manager will be presenting to Kiwanis on Thursday during lunch. Rotary has a meeting tomorrow, at which time they will discuss what an appropriate timeline is for us to approach them. In the next two weeks, we will also be presenting to the San Gabriel Community Foundation, and we are looking at a pretty fast-paced schedule in the next three weeks of reaching out to most of our local community organizations. And as Mark mentioned, if you have any groups that we have not covered, please feel free to let us know, and we're doing the outreach and getting on their agendas.
So, tomorrow night, there is AYC new board installation dinner, and you're going to be there to present?
I will not be, because I will be presenting to the chamber board tomorrow. We've been scheduled since last month to attend their board meeting tomorrow night to present on Measure SG.
Okay.
But we will be, as far as AYC is concerned, we are on their radar, and as Mark mentioned, we have staff members, executive team members, who are very active with a lot of our local organizations. So, we will be working with those department heads and getting on the calendars for all of our local community groups. And AYC is on top of our list, along with La Casa and a number of others.
Arminay, do we have them contact you directly to set up a presentation?
Absolutely. They can contact me directly, and I'm actually keeping a schedule that Mark and I are sharing with our consultants to make sure we're doing as much outreach as we can. Thank you.
So, do you have a flyer? Because tomorrow night, there will be reporters, media reporters at the AYC dinner, so if you have flyer, I can just give to them and mention about it.
We absolutely can have flyers available for you tomorrow.
Okay.
Great. And that goes for everybody else as well.
Yeah. I'll also be at that, that dinner, so it's a good idea. Especially if we have the, do we have the multilingual ones?
We do. We have them in Chinese and Spanish as well.
Nice, okay.
And the last thing, I just wanted to thank the council for the extension of my contract tonight. I can't tell you how much I've enjoyed working for the council and the community and with the staff that we have, and I hope that that's the first of many extensions, and it works for both sides.
Absolutely, yeah. I mean, when I talked about, you know, improving the culture of the organization, I think you've been a big part of that as well already in just the two years that you've been with us, so.
Thank you very much. And that's all I had.
Next item.
Council comments and conference and meeting reports.
See if we can try to wrap this up. Let's go with Councilmember Liao first.
Okay, all right. So, last month, the Secretary of State and Elizabeth D. did a briefing regarding this, you know, March election. And this year will be different, because it will not just one election day, but 11 days to vote, and there will be a new voting machines. And in LA County alone, there's 1,000, 1,000 new voting centers. So, this is a big, big changes from the previous election. And one thing is about the vote by mail, vote by mail. They have 150 drop-offs available, you know, across LA County, so you can just drop off any of this 150. However, I found there is a mistake or an error in their, you know, voting machine. Right now, they have 13 languages, and one is Chinese and one is Cantonese. There's no such a thing as reading Cantonese. So, I recommend using one traditional Chinese and one simplified Chinese. So, hopefully, they will correct that before, you know, the election date. But we do have a lot of Chinese voters in our community, so this is very important. So, I just hope that maybe we can send some kind of a, I don't know, if they don't change that, then how are we going to do it? You know, because they just, you have to tell them regardless if it's Cantonese, just-
Did you communicate this to Dean Logan? Because he should have been at that one, too.
Yes, I brought this up two months ago, but nothing happened, so that's why I went to the Secretary of State. So, I mentioned about it.
Are you talking about the meeting that also included the county registry recorder?
Yeah.
Was he also present?
No, but someone, I talked to him about it. But, you know, to change that, I thought, well, I don't know. You know, they don't give me the date that they will correct that, but they just said, well, we're going to make it, you know, changes before, and I don't know how many days before the election day. But this is very important. Another issue is the, in our communities, they're, what in the state of California, there are so, 30% of the voters are independent voters. So, they cannot vote for, you know, Democrat presidential candidates, and so they have to apply first for, it's called the crossover, and it's just a simple form. And then, you know, if they qualify, then they can vote for the president candidates. That's by vote by mail. But if you go to the voting centers, then all you have to do is just request for, you want to vote for a president, so, and that is allowed. So, this is two critical things that I think we should know. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Woman Castanza.
Thank you, Mayor Poo. I just want to wish everybody a very happy 2020 New Year, and may all your blessings come true this year.
Thank you. Councilmember Harengton.
Thank you, Mayor. I echo those comments, so thank you. Happy New Year. I did have one item that I wanted to bring up. On Monday, the San Gabriel Valley Council for Metro is going to send a support letter for, we're applying for a grant for zero emission buses. They've requested all the service members to get support letters from their cities, so you should all have one in front of you, a sample, without objection at, like, the mayor to execute it and get it to Metro. So, if there's no objection, hopefully we can handle that.
It shall be done.
I wanted to wish everyone a happy new decade. This is our first meeting, so kind of exciting, I guess. 2020 should hopefully be good to all of us. I, let's see, I wanted to commend the staff. They've been working, well, especially, the front desk staff. I was here the other day, I think it was last week, and there was a line of people, and they're all trying to get their new license permits. And it was a steady line. I asked, I talked to some of the staff, and it just doesn't end. It just kept going and going all day, and so I just wanted to commend the staff for working harder than usual, because they didn't get a break at all, it seemed like. A lot of staff time, so it's exciting that people want to stay in our city and renewing their licenses, but it's all so concentrated in the first month or so. Also, on Saturday is our census meeting, and the mayor and I were the co-leaders for the census meeting, so I wanted to- the census meeting, so I wanted to just commend the staff again for working on that. I mean, they're working on two different causes, Measure SG, making sure people are educated about it, and then that we also have the census that looms right behind us. So there's a lot going on right now, and, you know, I, I really do appreciate all that effort that's being done. So that was all.
Thank you. And I also want to wish everybody a happy new year. I do think it's going to be a bright and successful year for, for a lot of us. And in line with that, just a quick report on the San Gabriel Lunar New Year Festival. We've been, we had a meeting this, this afternoon and been working hard on it, and I'm personally excited about bringing some newer things to the, to the festival, so I think that it's going to be a lot of fun. And, you know, I think it's good that we kind of continue to evolve and keep it fresh, and so I think it'll have a good draw and, and I, yeah, I mean, you know, sometimes it's hard to, to keep things moving forward, keep it fresh, but I think that we've got some new things planned this year, which will actually make it even better than, than years past, so. And with that, I think we are adjourned till our next regular city council meeting on December, or sorry, January 21st, 2020, here in city council chambers. Thank you.